My name is Dennis Reep. I'm the elected town meeting moderator. On behalf of all the elected and appointed officials of the town, welcome and thank you for coming to this annual town meeting. I hereby call the May 12th, 2025 Annual Town Meeting of the Town of Boxborough to order. Pleased to see such a large turnout here this evening. As I said, there's seats in front still if you'd care to sit down. Tell those checking in, please remind people that there are seats in the front if they would like them. Moving on, we do have a brief opening ceremony. Could you please stand for our national anthem performed by the Blanchard Memorial Vocal Ensemble under the direction of Margie Callahan?
Please feel free to sing with us.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright, bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the red parts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the hawked roost there, the loaves bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and of the home of the brave?[156.16][156.16](Applause)
All right, please remain standing. Yashni Umapathy and Nafi Legasi will lead us in a voluntary pledge of allegiance.
America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible in liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you students for leading us.[193.84][193.84](Applause) All right, thank you. We have a number of people up front involved with the business of town meeting tonight. The person to the left of me is our town clerk Rebecca Harris. Person to the right of me is town council Joe Fair. Also with us is Jonathan Eichman, sitting over on the side here. He's our council for land use matters which may come up tonight. Sitting to my far right, we have town administrator Michael Johns. Raise your hand, Mike. And sitting at the table to my right, to your left, is the Boxborough Select Board. So Kristen, may I ask you to introduce yourself and your board?
Absolutely, my pleasure. I'm Kristen Hilberg, the current chair of this Boxborough Select Board.
David McKeonan, select board member.
Bob Stempel, select board member.
Priya Sundaram, vice chair.
The clerk?
Clerk.
Yeah. I'm Wes Fokes.
All right, thanks. Thank you, Select Board. Sitting to your right and just down in front of me is our finance committee. Chair and members, would you please introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Tony Newton, chair of the finance committee.
Maria Neeland, member of the finance committee.
Joe Stolpin, member of finance committee.
Becky Neville, member of the finance committee.
John Connor, member of the finance committee.
John Greven, member of the finance committee.
Sheriff Sir Wassival, finance committee.
Okay, and then down in front, we have assistant town administrator Rajan Hudson, administrative assistant Kelly Price. They're down there running the projector so we can all see the motions and the presentations. Also down front is town finance director Hung Wa Lee to assist with any financial facts of the matter. In the front row of chairs tonight, we have the planning board, members of the planning board, members of the fire station building committee. We may have other members of the personnel board and school committee present, though we'll probably hear more from them tomorrow night. And we also have numerous town department heads and staff, our chiefs of police and fire, as well as members of volunteer boards and committees on hand to speak to some of the motions as needed. This meeting is being broadcast live and is also being recorded for on-demand viewing on BXB TV by Littleton Community Television. I want to say thank you to LCTV's executive director Mark Crory, LCTV's video production supervisor Kirby Dolak, LCTV's video program coordinators Judy Reed and Nicholas Casaleto, BXB TV media technicians Rob Crory, David Stalphy, and Sophie Larri, and photographer and logistics coordinator Diane Douglas. Anything to add, Mike? At this time, we would like to recognize an important member of our community, someone who has helped us to broadcast all of our official meetings, town meetings, and so on and so forth. So I'd like to, along with the chair of our select board, Kristen, award this to Kirby Dolak. This is a certificate of lifetime excellence from the Town of Boxborough for public service. While Kirby is making his way up, I'd just like to share a few words from the town. This is a lifetime achievement award. Kirby, you are an invaluable, diligent, creative, and innovative team member. Being the forefather of BXB TV, you have been pivotal in making our cable services, community outreach, and engagement taking it to new heights. It has been an honor working with you over the years and it will be a great loss to the Town of Boxborough with your upcoming retirement. We are so thankful for all you have done given of your heart and total dedication to the Town of Boxborough. The level of coverage and media engagement in town would not be where it is without you. We wish you many years of well-deserved rest, relaxation, and enjoyment in retirement. Congratulations and Godspeed on your upcoming retirement, Kirby, from a very grateful town.[462.78][462.78](Applause) And this is a picture of Kirby behind the camera, signed by all the board and committee chairs that you have served broadcasting for the town.
I have to say one more thing about Kirby because Kirby keeps us all in order. None of us are techies. I'm usually late, something's not working. He reminds me of what I need to do. I don't know what I'm going to do without you. You've got really, really big shoes to fill. During COVID, he made sure all of our Zooms were connected, our laptops worked, so we're really going to miss you. Yeah. (Laughter)
Okay, yeah, so non-voters over the age of 18, you'd need to sit in the back of the hall in the area that we mark off here typically, but we're nearly full. If we have voters mixing in with non-voters, that shouldn't be such a big deal because when it comes time to vote, we're likely asking for these green cards anyway. So anyway, still, again, people are coming in. There's a few seats in the front, so checkers, when people show up, please direct them down front. Town meeting will be tonight, and if you approve the proposed procedural motion, a bit later, we will continue if needed to tomorrow, Tuesday the 13th, Wednesday the 14th, and Thursday the 15th, as needed. The Boxborough municipal election is Tuesday, May 20th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Town Hall. There are contested races for seats on the select board, planning board, and library trustees, along with unopposed candidates seeking reelection to the school committee, constable, town clerk, and town moderator positions. Please consider the candidates and vote next week. Okay, so this is town meeting. The agenda for the town meeting is the warrant. Everything we discuss in this meeting is in this warrant. This is not a public comments section of the select board or planning board meeting, nor is it a public forum or a public hearing, so we will not be discussing anything that's not already identified in the warrant. The Boxborough Town Meeting is the legislature for the town. We collectively approve town expenses, vote on capital purchases, approve bylaws, determine land use, and other matters that may be included in that warrant. And that warrant includes summaries and recommendations for each article. So if you don't have a warrant, I know we have printed ones in the back. Going back to my thanks, Becky has reminded me I jumped ahead. On behalf of the town, I also want to extend our thanks to the Blanchard Schools principal, Michael Voto, for being our gracious host, and the Blanchard Schools, Dan Rawls and his staff, and to Ed Kukla and our DPW staff for preparing the gym for tonight's meeting. And in addition to the fine work of our paid staff, one reason this town runs so well is the dedicated work of literally hundreds of volunteers, many of who are here tonight who so generously contribute countless hours of their time. So we are the legislature, and so in addition to the warrant, the material on the tables in the hallway includes a postcard with the QR code for the detailed fiscal year 26 school budget. There's also the 2024, you know, last year's town report, the planning board report on municipal use zoning change that'll be discussed under special town meeting article one, and a packet containing the motions to articles 40 to 42 and a guide to town meeting. So these documents, along with some of the other, some of the presentations and supplementary information, are available on the town's website, wwwboxborough-ma.gov. My job as moderator is to be the presiding officer of this legislature. The Boxborough Town Meeting process is guided by Town Meeting Time, a handbook of parliamentary law prepared by the Massachusetts Moderators Association. My job as moderator is to make sure that town meeting is fair. There's a set of rules and everybody follows them. It's open. Everyone who wishes to speak has the opportunity to do so. It's civil. Everyone listens respectfully, and one part of being civil is that there's no cheering or booing during the discussion of articles. And most important, relevant, all the discussion, the motions, any possible amendments must be within the scope of the article and motion on the floor. We typically refer to this as within the four corners of the article or the motion, consistent with the requirement that the voters must be notified in advance of items to be discussed at town meeting, and that's by way of the warrant. Please be aware that we vote on motions, which might be slightly different from the wording of the articles printed in the warrant. The motions will be displayed on the screen so you can see the exact wording. Starting on page eight of the warrant, you will find the Town Meeting Guide, which summarizes the process with some of the most common motions listed. You were also given a one-page handout on Boxborough Town Meeting process as you walked in. Four key points. To be recognized and speak, you need to be standing at one of the alternating microphones. Any voter, okay, and speakers, when you get to the microphone, state your name, address for the record, and you're limited to three minutes, and we'll run a clock up here on the screen and you'll see it. All discussion must be relative, relevant to the motions on the floor. I will call for a vote when no one is standing at a microphone. If someone wants to end debate before, before that, we need, they need to come to a microphone and say, "I move the question." Sponsors of the article cannot move the question. You cannot make a comment at the mic and then immediately move the question. I may call for votes to be made simply by a voice yay or nay, or a show of hands using the green cards. That's what I typically do. Or if necessary, we will do a standing count. All voters should have received a bright green card when you signed in. When I ask for a vote by a show of hands, I will just ask you to raise that card to make it easier. Under town bylaw, I have the ability to declare a majority or two-thirds vote using the voice vote or show of hands methods. If I do so and seven of you think I was in error, please say so immediately, and we will immediately go to a standing count vote instead. Note, if anyone has a question about process, you can stand in place at any time and say point of order in a loud voice that I can hear you and direct your question to me, and except for a point of order, you must be at a microphone to ask a question, make a comment, or make a motion to move the question. We will have two microphones tonight, and I will be recognizing people to speak in an alternating fashion. I will refer to these microphones as to my right or your left, or my left or your right. For the articles to be discussed tonight, we will designate the microphones as yes and no, as we've done on occasion for articles of great interest in the past. Let's see, which one is which now? The microphone to my right is the yes, I think, and the one to my left over here is the no. So that will be the setup for tonight at least. Please note, we have those beige chairs along the aisles directly behind the microphones that are provided for people waiting in line at the microphones. I don't know if they've been filled in since we have such a large crowd, but that's where you need to be seated to line up for the microphones. Please remember to keep the discussion civil and disagree without being disagreeable. Boxborough has a long tradition of civility at town meeting, and let's continue that tradition here tonight. Just a word about consent agendas. In an effort to streamline town meeting, we will continue with the use of those consent agendas. These are intended to speed the passage of articles that have already been discussed at previous public meetings and have the unanimous recommendation of both the select board and the finance committee. This consent process allows for motions under these articles to be acted upon as a unit, as one unit, and to be passed without debate. This year, we have five separate consent agendas as listed on page 13 in the warrant. I'll explain that detailed process for acting on the consent agendas when we get to the first one. And we also have special town meeting tonight, and many of you may be wondering about that and why that's, and how that's being held as part of the annual town meeting. The annual town meeting is intended to address items and proposed expenditures for the town's fiscal year 2026 that starts on July 1st, 2025, and runs through June 30th, 2026. The special town meeting is intended to address immediate items of business and proposed expenditures for the current fiscal year 2025, which started July 1st, 2024, and runs through June 30th, 2025. So we do have some preliminary motions, so before we get started with motions on the actual articles in the warrant, we need to establish some rules specific to this town meeting by way of procedural motions. Select Board Chair Hilberg, do we have procedural motions ready to go?
Am I on, oh, I just have to get really close. Okay. I move that any adjourned sessions of the May 12th, 2025 Annual Town Meeting be held on Tuesday, May 13th, Wednesday, May 14th, and Thursday, May 15th, 2025, in the Blanchard Memorial School Gymnasium, starting at 7:00 p.m., and further, that no debate will begin on any new article after 10:30 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seeing no one at a microphone, all in favor, say, raise your green cards. Let's try that. Okay, cards down, all opposed, raise your green cards. That passes by a wide majority.
I move that one's final action has been taken on an article, and the next order of business has been taken up, or the session of the annual town meeting has been adjourned, the article may not again be considered at that annual town meeting unless the moderator determines in his discretion that reconsideration would be in the best interest of the voters. Second.
Seconded. Seeing no one at a microphone, all in favor, raise your green cards. Cards down, all opposed, raise your green cards. That passes by a majority.
I move to adjourn the May 12th, 2025 Annual Town Meeting until after the May 12th, 2025 Special Town Meeting is dissolved.
Seeing no one at a microphone, all in favor, raise your green cards. Cards down, all opposed, raise your green cards. That passes by a majority. I hereby call the May 12th, 2025 Special Town Meeting of the Town of Boxborough to order. Before I request a motion on Article One, I want to remind everyone of the four corners concept and how it applies to Articles One and Two. Article One proposes to amend the zoning bylaw. The wording is specific to municipal and governmental use, and the locations involve the entire town. Since the zoning bylaw is complicated and often requires some context and discussion, I will allow for some latitude involving comments or questions that consider what can be built and where to provide town meeting with a better understanding of the implications and possible outcomes. Article Two is a funding request for the design of a fire station at a specific location, 72 Stowe Road. The four corners for this article are painted squarely around the, around the request for design funding involving the specific location of 72 Stowe Road as printed in the warrant. The article summary in the warrant also describes the consideration of other locations that concluded with the selection recommendation of 72 Stowe Road. Therefore, talking about 72 Stowe Road as the proposed location and how it was selected in comparison to others is certainly within the four corners. However, changing the location is not within the four corners, and any proposed amendment to change 72 Stowe Road to some other location will be ruled out of order due to lack of notice to the voters. Ms. Hilberg, do you have a motion?
I do. I move that special town meeting, Article Two, be taken up as the first item of business for special town meeting, postponing Article One until action on Article Two is complete.
It's been moved and seconded. Explanation, Ms. Hilberg?
Yes. Okay, so we spent months debating which should go first because this is a chicken and the egg situation. They're both related to each other. And, you know, this evening, three of the boards, Fire Station Building Committee, the Select Board, and I believe the FinCom, all kind of came to the same conclusion independently that in order to really understand what we need to do for Article One, we need to decide if we're building a fire station or not. If we're not building a fire station, we might approach Article One differently. So, you know, again, in order to get all of the information out in front of you so that you can make a good educated decision, the select board felt that we should move Article Two first.
Okay, and is there a recommendation from the select board, assuming you've had time to discuss it?
I think that was it. Anything else?
Yep.
Select Board recommends.
Okay, does the finance committee have a recommendation on this motion?
Finance committee recommends.
Mike?
The finance committee recommends.
All right, the fire station building committee, do you have a recommendation on the motion to take out of order?
Point of order, Larry? I'm not sure if I'm at the right microphone or not, yes or no, but I don't think it matters for this. I'm Larry Grossman, 291 Depot Road. The Fire Station Building Committee strongly supports hearing Article One before discussing Article Two, I'm sorry, before discussing Article One regarding zoning. There's been a tremendous amount of time, effort, study, diligence with consultants, engineers, many meetings, and the, we've also done over a dozen forums, but tonight we have many more people that we can talk about the nuances of how we came up with this recommendation, and we feel that it's sort of the cart before the horse, talking about the zoning before we allow the people that are here tonight to hear some of the details of our recommendation.
Okay, and then the Capitol Committee had a recommendation which consists of Mike Johns, John Connor, Gary Kushner, Dave McKeonan, and Bob Stempel. Does the Capitol Committee have a recommendation on taking Article Two first? And it's okay to have no opinion, that's an option. Go ahead, Mike. Capitol Committee recommends. All right, discussion from the floor. I will go to the no microphone first. Name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Brad Hampson, 49 Wheeler Drive. I don't understand, and certainly I personally cannot support allocating $2.5 million to design a fire station.
Okay, this is, we're talking about just taking Article Two first.
Right, Mr. Moderator, I'm explaining why I have the position I have. Given that, I don't see why it makes sense to vote on Article Two, possibly allocating that sum of money for the design, when the town isn't clear that it has the authority to actually build the fire station there.
Phone, yes, microphone to my right, please.
Hello? There you go.
I don't think you were standing close enough.
You can hear me now, right?
We can hear you loud and clear, Al. Thank you.
I'm Al Murphy, 72 McIntosh Lane. I'm going to vote, I'm going to speak to Article Two, not the order. Is that correct?
No, you're speaking just about, right now, we're only discussing and we're only going to vote on taking Article Two as the first item of discussion tonight. The no microphone to my left, please.
Yes, Diana Lepari, 394 Littlefield Road. I'm strongly opposed to taking Article Two before Article One because it makes absolutely no sense to do so. People came here tonight assuming we were going to discuss Article One first, and now to suddenly change that, I think, is unfair to the people in this room, and I strongly disagree with the idea of trying to vote on something when you don't even know if it is in a parcel that something can be built on. Since this committee has chosen to tie the money to a specific parcel, I think it's not in the interest of this body to be discussing it before Article One. Thank you.
The yes microphone, please.
Cheryl Mahoney, 188 Liberty Square Road. I support presenting Article Two before Article One because quite a few of people here tonight are hearing the actual facts that the building committee has been compiling for the past year. They've heard conversations, they've heard statements from their friends and neighbors, but tonight, it will give the town and the town's professionals the opportunity to provide the actual facts and the due diligence research that has been presented, and will speak to the fact that, why it was necessary to bring Article One based on the information that was being circulated during this hard work and diligence being presented by the building committee. I also do want to point out to moderator Reep's comments at the beginning, pretty much the same comments that I've been hearing for the past 20 years. The town and town officials consider the warrant a warning of actions to be taken and not, and the town is allowed to move business around. We have also in the past passed over articles, and people have been annoyed because they wanted to have their two cents at the microphone, and the town wasn't going to discuss the item that they had come to town meeting to discuss. This is how parliamentary rules proceed, so I am supporting the motion to move Article Two in front of Article One. Thank you.
Microphone to my left.
I think it's very simple, a lot of people in this room.
Tip the mic up. Yeah, tip the mic up.
Sorry. Robert Hendry, 118 Copley. I think it's very simple. Many people in the room, including many people in the area I'm sitting with, came here to vote for specific articles. They're not here to be swayed. They know what they want, and this is a bait and switch game to move the article that must pass in order for Article Two to even be worth discussing after Article, you know, One. If One fails, we're done. Two's toast. So let's do it first.
Article, microphone to my right, please.
Sure. So I'm going to politely disagree with my neighbor on Copley Road and say that it's, you know, let's not forget that you're going to get to hear all of the information about Article One and Article Two. Depending on how we move forward with Article Two might change how we move forward with Article One. I have heard a lot of scuttlebutt, for lack of a better word, the people are planning on amending the motion on the town meeting floor. Well, if that happens and we vote it, there's no going back, okay? So I feel really strongly, oh, Kristen Hilberg, Hill Road, that we need to get all of the facts out there. It is not a bait and switch because the facts don't change, and once you have all of them in your back pocket, you can make a really good decision on how your tax dollars are spent, where they're spent, what we do with them. So the select board, and myself included, feel very strongly that we need to talk about the fire station first, and then we will move on to the zoning. We completely understand they're interrelated, but we need to make sure that everything gets fully vetted.
Microphone to my left, please.
Brian Myrick, 232 Littlefield Road. Seems like Article One is mute once you discuss Article Two and when you vote on Article Two. And I agree with a lot of people that have spoken before me that we came here expecting Article One to be discussed first. That's it.
Microphone to my right, please.
David McKeonan, 170 Picnic Street. Actually, I presented the motion to the select board before this meeting that we actually take Article Two up first for the obvious reason that if Article, if we get all tied up in knots over, over the And so I think that, I think that what we need to do first is decide, do we want this fire station or not? And then the Planning Board can fix the, fix that, the bylaws to adjust accordingly. And that's my position. Thank you.
Microphone to my left.
Most of these arguments have been made already.
Name and address, Mark, please. Just so everyone knows.
Mark Barbadoro, 627 Old Harvard Road. Most of the arguments have been made, so I'm going to keep it really short, probably under a minute. I'm already down to 48 seconds. So basically, if you pass over Article One and you vote on Article Two, you will be voting on a property where a fire station is not allowed to be built. They're going to be designing a fire station where it is currently disallowed. The other reason is that the property has not yet been even paid for. So it's a bad idea to vote, to expend like over $2 million on a parcel of land that the building committee, because they may just really, really want it badly enough, will actually spend their dollars designing on a property that can't be built, and then you roll the dice and take your chances on the second article or bringing it back at town meeting another time. It's a bad risk. It's irresponsible. Thanks.
Mary Nedwarski, 70 Stonehedge Place. I move the question.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we vote now. We're just going to vote now on stopping debate on taking the motions out of order.
Is my microphone on?
Yes.
I've been standing in line waiting to say some things that are very positive about this, and I'd like to have a minute to do that.
It's been moved and seconded that we vote now on whether we're going to...
You just shot yourselves in the foot, okay?
Okay. So, but here's what we're doing. We're voting on stopping debate on switching the order of the articles. This needs a two-thirds to pass. If you want to keep talking about it, you can vote, vote it down. But an affirmative vote of two-thirds means we stop and then we'll go vote on the motion to change the order of the articles. So does everyone understand? All we're going to do now is vote on stopping debate on the motion to change the order of the articles. And it takes two-thirds. So if you want to stop debate and go to vote on that right now, we will. So all in favor of stopping debate on that motion, raise your green cards. All right, cards down, all opposed? That carries by the two-thirds. We are now back to the motion that was made by Kristin, which was taking Article Two as the first item of business and then taking up Article One second was the implied outcome of that. So that's, that's been moved and seconded. We've had, we've had the recommendations, so discussion from the floor. Oh, we're voting on it? I'm sorry.
Point of order?
This is just a majority, that we vote on taking the Article Two out of order and taking it first. So majority to, on the motion to switch the sequence, raise your green cards. Point of order? We're voting to take Article Two as the first item of business at this town meeting tonight. So an affirmative vote will put Article Two first in sequence. If you vote no, it'll revert back to the original order where we take Article One first. So, sorry for not clarifying that. All those in favor of the motion to take Article Two as the first item of business, raise your green card. Cards down, all those opposed, raise your green card. We're going to the standing count. So when our town clerk, Becky Harris, has her tellers ready, I will ask those voting in the affirmative to stand. Becky, let me know when you're ready. Yeah, standing. Hey, look, ready. All right. All those in favor of taking Article Two as the first item of business tonight, please stand in place and hold your green card up where the counters can see them, and please do not move around at this point. Everyone stay in their place. No moving around, and we're going to stay in our places until we're done with counting all the yes votes and all the no votes. All right. All those in favor of taking Article Two as the first item of business tonight, please stand in place and hold your green card up where the counters can see them, and please do not move around at this point. Everyone stay in their place. No moving around, and we're going to stay in our places until we're done with counting all the yes votes and all the no votes. Okay. Thank you. Sit down, please. Thanks for your patience. That motion fails. No 235, yea was 182. Motion under Article One, please.
I should read the motion first. All right, hold on. All right. I move that the town vote to amend the Boxborough zoning bylaw to include municipal governmental zoning as follows. In the zoning bylaw table of uses, 4.1.3.C add municipal governmental as allowed use across all districts to include AR, R1, B, B1, OP, TC, and IC. I'll explain all that in a minute. In section 9.2, terms defined, add the following: municipal governmental shall mean any structure or land used for municipal purposes by the town of Boxborough or any of its subdivisions, providing public services to or for the residents of the town.
Is there a second? Okay. Discussion, Ms. Hilberg. Presentation from the podium.
All righty. Can I do it from here or you want me down at the podium?
Wherever you're most comfortable.
I like this because I can look at everybody. Okay. So you're asking me to do tech and talk at the same time. I'm going to try to go a little slower than I usually talk. So what's this all about? Back in 1965, our zoning bylaws were originally written down and our zoning was created with the majority of the town zoned as agricultural residential because that's what the town was. Approximately 72.5% of the town is currently zoned agres, and the rest is a combination of, and this is when I told you I was going to explain it, business, industrial, commercial, office park, and town center districts. So here's a, just to orient you, here's a picture of the town. The yellow is agres. The darker yellow is the town center overlay district right in the center there. You can see Mass Ave, it's got most of our business, that's running down the center of town. Then you can see 495, and you can see the office park on the other side there of 495. So now, at least you'll know where everything is. So in 1991, the town recodified the zoning bylaws, and we've done that recently. And the reason you recodify is to make them easier to read, easier to understand, easier to interpret, and also to prevent any inconsistencies or errors that might be hanging out in there. In the 1991 version, the use table in the bylaws contained the category educational, governmental, and religious uses as allowed in the agres zone, but there was no definition. All right? And that's the distinction right here. It was in the use table, but there wasn't a definition. This is what our current use table looks like, and it's something we've all been following. I was a member of the ZBA for years. We were all following this. And as you can see, where it says educational, governmental, or religious use, why, 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 why? And I don't mean W-H-Y. So we were all assuming that this was absolutely allowed because the use table said it was. So in 1993, the town voted to update the definitions of several terms, including educational, governmental, and religious uses. The word government remained in the title but wasn't included in the body of the definition. Now, we did a lot of due diligence on this. There's no written record of any discussion or any specific votes or anything in the hearings that said, let's not use the word governmental. All right? Doesn't, we even, one of the Planning Board members knew someone who was on the Planning Board back in 93 and said, hey, do you remember ever specifically taking out the word governmental? And the answer was no. It wasn't discussed. So what we believe is that the omission was a clerical error. And I used to say Scrivener's ever up there, but I didn't know how to spell it. We took it out. But we do believe it was a clerical error. It was dropped by accident. So this is what the current definition actually says. Education governmental or religious use shall mean, okay, so all of those words in the front, any structure or land used for educational or religious purposes on land owned or leased by the Commonwealth or any of its agencies, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So one of the other reasons we believe it was a clerical error is because the word governmental is in the first sentence, but then it's dropped a little later. So what's the issue? So for more than 30 years, town officials have continued to believe that governmental use was allowed in all districts in town. And we just found out it wasn't because, you know, people doing their due diligence about whether 72 Stowe Road was an appropriate place to put a fire station really spent some time with the zoning bylaws. And truthfully, we're grateful because it needs to be corrected. Our attorneys have said this has to get fixed, come hell or high water. It needs to be, the use table and the definition have to be in concert. So at this time, our building commissioner, our zoning enforcement officer, same person, and town council have determined that municipal buildings aren't allowed to be constructed anywhere in town under our current zoning bylaws because governmental use isn't in the definition. All right, I repeated myself. A second legal opinion believes it could possibly be allowed with a special permit on 502 Mass Ave because that's a pre-existing non-conforming structure. And now, this is one of the reasons we wanted you to hear a little more about the fire station and how the site was selected, but that's okay. We're going to get there. Both town attorneys recommend we correct the language, and we need a solution so the fire station project can move forward anywhere. The current recommendation of the Fire Station Building Committee is that 72 Stowe Road is the best location, and I will say this has many residents concerned about municipal buildings in neighborhoods, and rightly so. So let's take a look. Many of our municipal buildings and services are already in agres. Now, I kind of want to point this out. We made a point of putting everything, overtime has kind of been in the center of town. Now, this is 72, oh, look at me shaking. It's nerve-wracking to be up here. That is 72 Stowe Road right there. Couple of things that I forgot to put on this list beyond those that are labeled are the community gardens. Both of those are also in agres, which kind of makes sense, but it's still a municipal use. Now, this doesn't mean we need to remove them. We don't need to stop them. We get to keep them. It's fine. We just can't build, we just can't build a fire station. So what's the solution? The Select Board, the Finance Committee, and the majority of the Planning Board believe the right thing to do is to restore the word governmental to the definition because it was never omitted on purpose. We have no evidence that it was omitted on purpose. The preferred term is municipal governmental, which is why the article seeks to amend both the use table and the definition. Because remember, governmental use is already in the use table, but we want to add the word municipal, and that's why it's an amend instead of creating, preventing an omission. The Select Board is in agreement with both the Planning Board's majority and minority opinions that they should revisit allowed uses in all of our zoning districts and spend any time necessary to be sure the districts, the use table, and definitions meet all of our current needs. We're not 1965 with 500 people on farms. There will be many, many opportunities for residents to weigh in, public hearings, I'm sure there will be forums. We don't do anything in Boxborough without a lot of discussion and a lot of, a lot of knowledge shared. Ultimately, any changes that might come is going to come back to town meeting for approval. Now, in the meantime, I know there's been lots out there that, you know, oh, the...
Okay, okay. Okay, you want to report that?
Yes.
Thank you, sit down, please. Thanks for your patience, that motion fails. Uh, no 235, yea was 182. Motion under Article One, please.
I should read the motion first. All right, hold on. Ah, all right. I moved the town vote to amend the Boxborough zoning bylaw to include municipal governmental zoning as follows. In the zoning bylaw table of uses, 4.1.3.C add municipal governmental as allowed use across all districts to include AR, R1, B, B1, OP, TC, and IC. I'll explain all that in a minute. In section 9.2, terms defined, add the following: municipal governmental shall mean any structure or land used for municipal purposes by the town of Boxborough or any of its subdivisions, providing public services to or for the residents of the town.
Is there a second? Okay, discussion, Ms. Hilberg, presentation from the podium.
Alrighty, can I do it from here or you want me down at the podium?
Uh, wherever you're most comfortable.
I like this because I can look at everybody. Okay, so... You're asking me to do tech and talk at the same time. I'm gonna try to go a little slower than I usually talk. So what's this all about? Back in 1965, our zoning bylaws were originally written down and our zoning was created with the majority of the town zoned as agricultural residential because that's what the town was. Approximately 72.5 percent of the town is currently zoned agres, and the rest is a combination of, and this is when I told you I was gonna explain it, business, industrial, commercial, office park, and town center districts. So here's a, just to orient you, here's a picture of the town. The yellow is agres. The darker yellow is the town center overlay district, right in the center there. You can see Mass Ave, it's got most of our business, that's running down the center of town. Then you can see 495, and you can see, um, the office park on the other side there of 495. So now, at least you'll know where everything is. So in 1991, the town recodified the zoning bylaws, and we've done that recently. And the reason we recodify is to make them easier to read, easier to understand, easier to interpret, and also to prevent any inconsistencies or errors that might be hanging out in there. In the 1991 version, the use table in the bylaws contained the category educational, governmental, and religious uses as allowed in the agres zone, but there was no definition. All right, and that's the distinction right here. It was in the use table, but there wasn't a definition. This is what our current, uh, use table looks like, and it's something we've all been following. I was a member of the ZBA for years, we were all following this, and as you can see, where it says educational, governmental, or religious use, Y, 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 and I don't mean W-H-Y. So we were all assuming that this was absolutely allowed, because the use table said it was. So in 1993, the town voted to update the definitions of several terms, including educational, governmental, and religious uses. The word government remained in the title, but wasn't included in the body of the definition. Now, we did a lot of due diligence on this. There's no written record of any discussion, or any specific votes, or anything in the hearings, that said, "Let's not use the word governmental." All right, doesn't, we even, um, one of the planning board members knew someone who was on the planning board back in 93 and said, "Hey, do you remember ever specifically taking out the word governmental?" And the answer was no, it wasn't discussed. So what we believe is that the omission was a clerical error, and I used to say Scrivener's ever up there, but I didn't know how to spell it, we took it out, but we do believe it was a clerical error. It was dropped by accident. So this is what the current definition actually says. Education governmental or religious use shall mean, okay, so all of those words in the front, "Any structure or land used for educational or religious purposes on land owned or leased by the Commonwealth or any of its agencies, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." So one of the other reasons we believe it was a clerical error is because the word governmental is in the first sentence, but then it's dropped a little later. So what's the issue? So for more than 30 years, town officials have continued to believe that governmental use was allowed in all districts in town. And we just found out it wasn't, because, you know, people doing their due diligence about whether 72 Stowe Road was an appropriate place to put a fire station really spent some time with the zoning bylaws, and truthfully, we're grateful, because it needs to be corrected. Our attorneys have said, "This has to get fixed, come hell or high water." It needs to be, um, the use table and the definition have to be in concert. So at this time, our building commissioner, our zoning enforcement officer, same person, and town council have determined that municipal buildings aren't allowed to be constructed anywhere in town under our current zoning law bylaws, because governmental use isn't in the definition. All right, I repeated myself. A second legal opinion believes it could possibly be allowed with a special permit on 502 Mass Ave, because that's a pre-existing non-conforming structure. And now, this is one of the reasons we wanted you to hear a little more about the fire station and how the site was selected, but that's okay, we're gonna get there. Both town attorneys recommend we correct the language, and we need a solution so the fire station project can move forward anywhere. The current recommendation of the fire station building committee is that 72 Stowe Road is the best location, and I will say this has many residents concerned about municipal buildings in neighborhoods, and rightly so. So let's take a look. Many of our municipal buildings and services are already in agres. Now, I kinda want to point this out, we made a point of putting everything over time, has kind of been in the center of town. Now, this is 70, oh, look at me shaking, it's nerve-wracking to be up here. That is 72 Stowe Road, right there. Um, couple of things that I forgot to put on this list beyond those that are labeled are the community gardens, both of those are also in agres, which kind of makes sense, but it's still a municipal use. Now, this doesn't mean we need to remove them, we don't need to stop them, we get to keep them, it's fine, we just can't build, we just can't build a fire station. So what's the solution? The select board, the finance committee, and the majority of the planning board believe the right thing to do is to restore the word governmental to the definition, because it was never omitted on purpose. We have no evidence that it was omitted on purpose. The preferred term is municipal governmental, which is why the article seeks to amend both the use table and the definition. Because remember, governmental use is already in the use table, but we want to add the word municipal, and that's why it's an amend, instead of creating, uh, preventing an omission. The select board is in agreement with both the planning board's majority and minority opinions, that they should revisit allowed uses in all of our zoning districts, and spend any time necessary to be sure the districts, the use table, and definitions meet all of our current needs. We're not 1965 with 500 people and farms. There will be many, many opportunities for residents to weigh in, um, public hearings, I'm sure there will be forums. We don't do anything in Boxborough without a lot of discussion and a lot of, um, a lot of knowledge shared. Ultimately, any changes that might come, it's going to come back to town meeting for approval. Now, in the meantime, I know there's been lots out there, that, you know, oh, the, someone's gonna drop a sewer treatment plant in your backyard, or someone's gonna take your property by eminent domain and do anything they want with it. All, all of these things are going on out there, but let's remember, there are so many safeguards in place. I think the number one thing is if you want to spend more than $5,000 in Boxborough, you have to come here and get approval. So nothing happens without coming to, before you. So, uh, the other thing is regarding this sewer, or a hazardous waste dump, or any other scary thing people could picture on Hill Road. Section 6.6 of our zoning bylaw, the environmental protection standards, offers another level of protection for all neighborhoods from potentially harmful projects. Debt restrictions in state law also prevent construction on conservation land. We have conservation land, we have municipal land. Without going to the state and getting a special dispensation, we're not building anything on conservation land. Your trails are safe, nothing's going to happen out there. So why vote yes now? One, like I said before, um, both of our town councils recommended we fix this. Um, per the planning board recommendations, you know, they both said in their recommendations that they want to bring it back, so I don't feel like I'm overstepping to say that we, the town, will begin a process of evaluating our zoning districts to meet current needs. Then changes will come back, either in November or next May, depending on how long the planning board, you know, believes they need to suss this out. And at the end of the day, by passing this article, it allows us to legally build a much-needed fire station without adding time and additional costs due to delaying the project. We have been working for 10 years to get this done, and in that time, prices just continue to go up, and any additional delay, so if Article One fails, and we have to wait for next year to come back and reevaluate Article Fi, uh, Article One, that's that much more time we're not building a fire station. And that much more time, our fire, um, firefighters are living and working in less-than-desirable locations. So we really encourage you to vote yes on this. Understand that nothing is going to happen between now and the town meeting, where we decide how Article One should be, or, I'm sorry, how the zoning bylaw should be amended. So, we, I, we, we encourage you to vote yes.
Okay, recommendation from the finance committee.
Finance committee unanimously recommends this article. This article was put forward to correct an error in the town zoning bylaw definitions.
Okay, report and recommendation from the planning board. I understand we have, uh, recommendation in favor and a recommendation against. Three minutes each, maximum.
Of course not. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The, uh, planning board recommends the passage of Article One by a vote of three to two majority. We reviewed the, the majority reviewed the historical information, including the zoning bylaws from the early 90s, as was presented, along with town meeting warrants, minutes from those meetings. We received the attorney's opinions, obtained input from a former, uh, board member, heard from the public during a hearing of over 50 attendees at each of two sessions. Based on our review, the majority decided on four key points. Number one, there was no intent to change the meaning of the bylaw on the 1991 recodification. This point is actually made clear in the 91 warrant. The original zoning bylaw updated through 1990 allowed for municipal uses in all districts. The 91 recodification also allowed for those uses, with a change simply, uh, of the word municipal to governmental. Point two, the majority believes that the definition for educational governmental religious use, as was described, that was added in 1993 mistakenly omits governmental uses. Uh, Ms. Hilberg spoke of that. The purpose of 93 article was to add definitions missed during the 91 recodification, that is clear in the warrant. There was no discussion or debate in the minutes of the warrant from the ni, uh, from 93 to change it, to disallow governmental use. The word governmental is still on the table, and the majority believes that the word cannot be ignored. And if the intent was to exclude governmental uses, undoubtedly, that word would have been removed. Three, the majority surveyed over 20 other surrounding communities and found that with few exceptions, all of those communities allow for municipal use throughout their districts. The majority allow municipal use by right, uh, what is exactly what the select board proposes, others by special permit, nevertheless, they all allow for municipal use. As far as processes concerned, the majority does not believe it's appropriate to amend the select board's article. The planning board's job is to hold a public hearing and issue a report, which we did. The board has a responsibility to anyone who properly presents a legitimate article, uh, and this is a short-term responsibility. We also have a responsibility to the town for long-term planning. The majority believes the article does not interfere with the long-term, as this, in case, it, because in this case, it corrects what we believe to have been an error and restores what had been in the bylaw previously. Until there's a case for change, we have a duty to the person submitting the restorative article, in this case, the select board, to advance it. In summary, the majority recommends the passage of this article to align with the drafters' and town meeting's original intent. This does not prevent the planning board from exploring municipal use further as part of long-term planning, and this appears to be an area where the majority and minority do agree. But the majority believes this article should be passed now, as leaving something this important and fundamental unaddressed may result in unintended consequences and poor decisions, putting the town, its residents, and property values at risk. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, I'm presenting the minority report here. Um, two out of five members, uh, do not approve of the adoption of this bylaw amendment as written, uh, for the following reasons. Uh, we believe the planning board has not had enough time to conduct, uh, the necessary review, um, of the proposed bylaw amendment, to ensure that it aligns with the current bylaws and does not conflict with any sections of the bylaw. The proposed bylaw amendment may result in unintended consequences, uh, putting residents and their properties, uh, values at risk. Uh, we believe the planning board has not obtained sufficient public input due to the rush on, uh, to get this article to the town meeting. Uh, the bylaw amendment as proposed broadly impacts every resident in town by allowing any kind of municipal use in any zoning district, so long as it is deemed, uh, to support a public service. Uh, the town has changed and grown significantly from when the language allowing municipal uses in the agricultural, uh, excuse me, agricultural and residential district was added to the zoning bylaw in 1960s. Uh, what was appropriate during that time may not, um, any longer fit into the needs of the town today. Uh, number three, we believe that the, the process of the planning board, um, it's the process of the planning board to review and report on zoning articles, um, and we feel like this was a rushed process, uh, with only 18 days from the date of the proposed bylaw amendment. Was referred to the planning board at the start of the public hearing, and just one day from the close of the pubbing, uh, the public hearing, uh, we were given one day to, um, hear the recom, um, print, get a recommendation into the printed warrant for the town meeting. Uh, the planning board was not, uh, has not completed a thorough review of the proposed language in the article, as is our practice when reviewing any zoning article. Uh, the language in the proposed bylaw is imprecise and conflicts with other language in the zoning bylaw, and this exposes the town to the potential for litigation or legal expenses. Uh, then lastly, although the select board has indicated that this is just restoring something that originally existed to our bylaws and was unintentionally lost due to a recodification in the early 1990s, our research shows that this is not the case. Uh, regardless of the prior history, uh, the zoning bylaw presented herein is, uh, and its implications today must be what is considered. We recommend that town, uh, meeting vote no on this article as proposed, and allow the board to take the necessary time to gather input and conduct further research, uh, to define and determine what municipal uses are best located in which zoning districts. Only after that very deliberate process will the, uh, planning board be properly prepared to bring forth a zoning article that is unambiguous, well-defined, and better protects, uh, residents from unintended consequences. Thank you.
Okay, to the floor. Uh, name and address, please. Microphone to my left, the no-mike.
Jim Moss, Bicentennial Way. I'm firmly standing with the minority opinion of the planning board members. You've just heard the reasoning why. I'm just gonna basically tell you that Boxborough was very different several years ago. It had a few people, maybe 700, they had lots of open land. Today, we have almost seven times that number of people in town, and we have very little buildable land. But the other issue is this bylaw. It allows the government to just walk into your residential area and decide that they're gonna put a dump there, or a well, or anything else they feel like putting in, and it'll destroy your property values, there could be a lot of noise, all kinds of things, but they've got the right to do it. Now, I know that they said that they have a breaker, that you can come to town meeting and vote their idea down. That seems kind of like secondary, like the horse has already left the barn. So, I am not going to vote for this Article One, because I don't think it's right. I think the planning board needs to go back and redo the entire bylaw and make sure it is more matching to what is, what our world is like today. Thank you.
Yes, microphone to my right, please.
Thank you. Cheryl Mahoney, 188 Liberty Square Road. Facts matter. Please don't let the frustrations and fears we're experiencing in our current reality prevail tonight. I am proud to live in a community that believes in the value of common sense and non-inflammatory rhetoric. Please listen to the facts, view the studies, and the data being presented. Yes, ask the hard questions, but please, please, just because the answer doesn't fit an objective that you have, doesn't mean the fact is wrong. Sometimes a cigar is just a cigar. Anyone that took Psychology 101 knows that for you, end quote. I was a real estate paralegal in the 1990s, and we had to transcribe word for word, multiple-page documents, all the time. And sometimes, we made mistakes. Sometimes omissions occurred. One of the things we did is we did land court titles. Many, many times, these court cases were brought forward simply because of a Scrivener's error in a document, that even just one word or one digit that was missing in that chain of titles, made that title unusable. And the wording then needed to be corrected by a court judgment. Well, this is the court tonight that is seeking to change that. Recently, there was a local media posting referencing a zoning bylaw vote in Ipswich last year at town meeting. Years ago, I heard the phrase from a, about a street market vendor, "Same, same, but different." Both Ipswich and our article tonight deals with zoning bylaws. However, unlike ours, seeking to correct a transcription error from the 1990s, Ipswich was looking to create a standing-alone zoning category tailored just for a very large combined public safety facility. It also sought to expand the building's square footage to do so. This is not what we're considering tonight. Ipswich, with this article, the consensus provided by our town council and our zoning enforcement commissioner, are professionals that we retain in order to provide opinions to us. It is, is that no municipal structure can be constructed anywhere in this town with the current faulty language. That means you can't even create a picnic pavilion at the Fields. An omission of one word in the body does rise.
Time's up.
The word included in the title of the paragraph and related to the use table, one word that someone didn't correctly transcribe.
Thank you. Thank you. Three minutes is up. Microphone to my left, please. Name and address.
Elaine Olmstead, 89 Stowe Road. I'll be brief. Um, I carefully read through the bylaws of the zoning, um, regulations, and what I noticed was that under the current bylaws, in residential and the ag zones, things such as service stations, auto repair shops, landscaping business, and other repair shops are prohibited. The purpose is to protect those neighborhoods from businesses that involve many vehicles, large machinery, noise, and light pollution, and possible well-water contamination, as well as destroying the scenic rural quality. Now, my belief is that the fire station might have similar impact on our neighborhood. For example, um, no, I said that already. Uh, so I believe that the zoning should protect, protect the neighborhoods in the same way that, um, we would protect them against private business when we're thinking about municipal projects. Thank you.
Yes, microphone to my right, please.
Dick Wagman, 86 Leonard Road. It looks like more than 30 years ago, somebody made a mistake. I don't know how legal managed to let that one slip through, but somehow or another, they talked about governmental stuff without then bothering to define it. In my opinion, the town should not be stuck with living with a mistake for 30 years and going forth forevermore, and it should not, not be the end of the world to manage to change that. For those over on the other side who have said that, (cough) excuse me, this would end up allow, allowing, uh, such things as polluting, uh, uses, or bad stuff to be in their backyard as being through a back door with the town meeting. Far from that, the town meeting is it. We are the front door. We should be proud of ourselves. If a bad use of, of something in, uh, agres stuff, i- if for governmental use is proposed, then we can defeat it. If it's wrong to put this fire station at 72, uh, Stowe Road, then by gory, let's do that directly, and let's not be half, halfway about it and, and do it because of some weird technicality in the law. We can do that without, uh, have, have, having to, uh, and this would be true for any future other possible things. I vote to support this amendment.
Microphone to my left, please, the no-mike.
Robin Lazaro, 959 Hill Road. I'm not against building a new fire station, but I am against Article One. Article One does more than just change the zoning bylaw to allow a fire station to be built at 72 Stowe Road. If that was the intention, that's what should have been written in this change. Article One amends the zoning bylaw to allow any municipal building, municipal structure anywhere in Boxborough. Article One goes too far. No matter what assurances you will hear about Boxborough, never going to build a municipal building next to your house, there are no guarantees, and our current select board may not be the same several years from now. So whatever promises are made today about the impact of this zoning bylaw change, they are not promises that are guaranteed in the future. There are ways to build a new fire station without this zoning change. Also, 72 Stowe Road was its intended purpose, and vote at town meeting in prior years was for, uh, low-income housing, and you see how that has been, um, manipulated, and so, um, anything can happen. I agree with the planning board minority, uh, position, that you really need to study it. You don't want to make a mistake that compounds the issue. Also, we hired professionals. We spent a lot of money at last town meeting to study, uh, to study this 72 Stowe Road. Where were those, a, a threshold issue is, can this location at 72 Stowe Road be used to build a fire station? That is a threshold question, and I, I say, shame on those professionals we hired, who did not take this into account as a threshold matter.
I think you're starting to discuss Article Two, yeah. Thank you. Microphones to my right, please.
Becky Neville, Middle Road, Boxborough. Mr. Moderator, I've got a question. I'm really hoping that we can hear from the town planner, because I'd like to hear from the professionals who work for our town on this. If this zoning amendment doesn't pass, I'd like to know what can be built at 72 Stowe Road. I believe the Housing Board could request it be zoned for MBTA property, and that would allow 118 units. A drug treatment facility could go in by right, an educational or religious use could go there by right. Would that include a school bus parking lot? I know the region's looking for somewhere in Boxborough to park and charge their electric vehicles, and I'm hoping the town planner can confirm my statement and add anything else I might have missed.
Alec, is that a question that you can address for us? Those were some hypothetical uses?
I just want to know if they're correct. I thi, I mean, I, I understand, I think they might be correct, and I just want to know.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, I will not address, uh, I'll do my best to address this as factually as possible, and that's by opening up this document here. The zoning bylaw of town, and you've seen parts of it, the table of uses outlines uses that are Y for yes, N for no, PB or ZBA for a special permit. Things like educational uses are allowed by right, that's also protected by certain elements of state law. Um, diving into specific ones, um, yes, housing is something that could be explored further by our bylaw, uh, educational uses, looking through it, public utilities by special permit. But ultimately, the way this process works is that any of you as individuals have the right to propose something on land that you own or have site control over. So speculatively, I can't really speak to what is going to happen there. If I could predict the future, that would be fantastic, I'd be a much better planner because of it, but- But each and every person is tested in the regard that you submit a proposal, we evaluate that through our in zoning enforcement officer who renders an opinion. If the person then is aggrieved by the opinion, they challenge it and it goes to the ZBA for them to come up with a determination.
Wait, just don't go away. I thought it was state law that a drug treatment facility could go anywhere in town. Is that not true?
I don't have the answer to that off the top of my head.
Okay, all right. And I support this. I totally support this. I think we need a fire station. I think we need to be able to put our municipal building places. If this doesn't pass, according to our current building inspector and our current town council, we can't even rebuild at 502 because it's zoned residential. So we're not going to have anywhere to build anything.
Okay, microphone to my left, please. Name and address.
Mark Barbadoro, 627 Old Harvard Road. And I think there was a mistake made. I wish Alec had stayed up and corrected it, but when you have a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming use or structure on a property in any town in the Commonwealth, you are allowed by special permit to alter, extend, and enlarge that property. The existing fire station predated the zoning bylaw that would prohibit it, and as a result, it's a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming fire station. So 502 can actually be reconstructed. When the planning board held their fortnight of hearings, they asked our special land use council, who is not here, but his job is to answer zoning questions for the planning board and the zoning board of appeals, and he said you could certainly rebuild, reconstruct, and enlarge that fire station on 502. So that is a fact, and it's in the special land use council's report, and that is available online on our website to look at. Another fact is that our conservation land will be protected and it will not disappear. I have the open space and recreation plan here, and it lists dozens of properties, and many of them are listed as not protected, meaning there's no conservation restriction on the property, meaning that the town could then take that property and use it for another purpose. So that's another fact. A third fact is that when the recodification took place, counter to the majority's report, what was changed at that time was the word municipal was changed to governmental. Now, without a special definition in the bylaw, plain language definitions applied, and a governmental use, which was allowed by right in every district, would be allowed by right throughout the town. Two years later, the bylaw was changed deliberately. A special definition was put in for the term, educational, religious, or governmental use, and that definition limited what the term could be used for. And it was that point that was done in full view of everyone at town meeting when the special definition was voted on and passed. That was when we could no longer do governmental uses. And then the last fact, there are several towns, actually, all the towns I've ever worked in or reviewed zoning in, all of them have governmental uses in some form or another allowed by right and by special permit. But each one does it a little bit differently, and that's what our planning board should be doing, is carefully reviewing the laws to make sure that our bylaws work well for our community and not just go back to what we had in the 60s. The town was very different in the 60s. You could put a building just about anywhere out of sight of people in any zone. Times, they are a-changing.
Microphone to my right, please. Name and address.
Hi, Hillary Grevin, Hill Road. I have two questions. One, I'd like to hear from the town planner or town council. If Article One does not pass, where can we build a fire station? Second question, have we looked at other towns with similar bylaws and what their language states?
Alec, are you prepared to answer that? Or would you like Jonathan to assist with this one? Jonathan Eichmann is town council-specific, the land use from Copland and Page.
Thank you, John Eichmann. The first question was, if this doesn't pass, where can we build a fire station in town? We've looked at this, actually, the planning boards councils looked at this as well. There is no obvious category where you can build. It would be an argument at best to use any of those categories to build a fire station in town. Second question, that would have to be Alec. I did not look at other towns' bylaws. I wasn't involved in them. Thank you.
Hillary, you have remaining time.
That's the only other question I had, is what similar towns and surrounding areas had for their bylaw.
Alec, do you have some information on this?
So, to answer that question, I do actually point back to something that Mark Barbadoro said. Towns do take different approaches to this. Some of your fellow planning board members here tonight did their own independent research. Some of our most adjacent neighbors do allow it across the board, and others do not. Special permit is oftentimes the middle ground solution that is in the zoning.
Thank you.
Microphone to my left, please. Name and address.
Brad Hampson, 49 Wheeler Drive. Our American system of government at all levels of government is based on checks and balances. It's my opinion that Article One gives broad power to the select board with few, if any, checks and balances to essentially put any municipal use facility anywhere in town. A zoning bylaw exists to define specific uses and where they are and are not allowed. If you read the current bylaw, you'll find that it goes into a very detailed level for most of the zones, all the different types of uses, whether they're allowed or not. Article One proposes that across the board, if it's municipal, it can be built, and Article One therefore defeats the fundamental purpose of a zoning bylaw. Parcels can be rezoned and use variances can be granted, but that process is rigorous, and it's rigorous for a good reason. It needs a lot of review and careful thought and input from the public. I believe the planning board should in fact have the opportunity to think this through and recommend in detail which municipal uses should be allowed where. All municipal uses are not the same. Some are pretty innocuous, like maybe an office building, a fire station, not so innocuous. I urge you to vote no on this article.
Microphone to my right, please.
Griffin Vermin, 318 Codman Hill Road, apartment E2. And before you start my time, would you mind pulling up the zoning map again? So I don't know if any of you guys are, is anybody from Codman Hill at all? No? Okay, I'm not surprised. So if you guys know, Codman Hill is the road after the highway. It's that little tiny green parcel down there in the bottom left corner, and you'll notice that that's not residential. That's what's green zone does. It's industrial, yeah, industrial commercial. So I don't really get a whole lot of choice about what kind of stuff is built around my condo complex. I'm not used to living somewhere long enough to really have much of a say in what I live next to. It's pretty much luck of the draw. I moved every year. I haven't, in my adult life, I haven't stayed anywhere more than two years. This is the first time, so good job, Boxborough. Appreciate it. However, not everybody in your community has the same voice as you guys do. Not everybody in your community has the energy to come out to these meetings and meticulously break down every little, every little detail of every little thing. And in my area in particular, I have the highway right there, which I hear all the time. Down the road is the, you know, your dump, your dump station, right? I think there's a preschool, there's like a, like some office buildings that they do some industrial stuff. And then across the street, out my window, I have this beautiful view of, I guess, some company that stores all their construction equipment there. So it's lovely and noisy. So I've worked down the street from fire stations. I've lived down the street from fire stations before. They're not that disruptive. There's worse things to have, you know? And also, when it comes to municipal constructions, people like me and the clients that I serve, who are usually underprivileged in a lot of ways, very poor, on disability, have severe mental illnesses or severe disabilities that impair their ability to participate in your communities at this level, really depend on a lot of municipal constructions. Like, that's usually where I bring them into the community. It gives them access to the community. So opening up the entire community to more municipal constructions opens up the community to a lot of people that you don't see here. So, thank you.
Microphone to my left, please.
Good evening. My name is Joan Blaustein, and I live at 115 Stowe Road in Sheriff's Meadow. I'm speaking tonight, obviously, against Article One, because I'm concerned that the zoning article is being rushed through to facilitate the new firehouse, but has broad implications for the site and construction of future municipal uses anywhere in town, including possibly your own neighborhoods. Any change to the zoning bylaw deserves a more thorough and full participation of the planning board. This article came quickly through the select board and was given the required hearing by the planning board, but does not benefit from the expertise and knowledge of the planning board from a content perspective. A little bit about my background, I am a retired urban and regional planner who worked for the Metropolitan Area Planning Council for 30 years, so I have worked with many different kinds of communities, planning zoning development issues. I also attended many meetings of the Fire Station Building Committee via Zoom, and I'm complete support of the need for a fire station. That's not a question. As a resident of a 55-plus community, we benefit very much by their speedy response time. But the current discussion of the zoning article really centers around two issues. There are some who view it simply as a correction that we need to make, and perhaps that's true, but it has more immediate and wide-ranging consequences than just the fire station at 72 Stowe Road. Zoning represents the town's vision for their future, the way to implement your master plan. It is, it shapes all future development for private developers. So we spend a lot of time on the details of the zoning, the zoning to protect from what we sometimes think of as the evil developers, but it's simply the rules of the game. We all agree, the rules of the game. I'm a little skeptical that we'll just go back and then do a fuller job of, you know, looking at the, doing a more in-depth dive. But I definitely think that as the town changes, there are municipal uses that we may not really consider now. We don't know what they might be. Not all municipal uses are created equally, so we all benefit from having all of these uses, the library, the transfer station, but they're not equal. And I think we want to make sure that we've looked at all the potential uses that might crop up. Even the most benign uses will have construction impacts, noise, lighting, parking, all of the issues that we on Stowe Road are concerned about now. And although it's true that the other checks and balances, dimensional requirements and such, just having across the board municipal uses in any district doesn't really speak to whether or not they're appropriate in that district. So I think this was rushed through, needs further consideration. Thank you.
Microphone to my right, please.
Mary Nadvorsky, 70 Stonehenge Place. I move the question.
It's been moved and seconded. That we stop debate now?
Mr. Moderator, I have a point of order. It is my understanding, and if I'm wrong, you're going to tell me, that just because someone calls the question, you have the discretion to keep going, especially on a situation like this that is so important to this town, and there are a lot of people who want to speak.
It'll be up to the voters.
Am I right or not?
I have a lot of discretion, but I'm not going to remove the will of the voters in front of me tonight. The motion is, is move the question, which means we stop debate and then vote on the motion on the article. We need a two-thirds to stop debate. So if there's interest in continuing to debate, do not vote in favor of this. So when I ask for all in favor, you're going to vote to stop debate. It takes a two-thirds. If you want to keep debating, don't vote in favor of it. So all those in favor of stopping debate now, raise your green cards. Cards down, all those against stopping debate, raise your green cards. We're going to do the standing count again. Important to get it right. All right, while we're doing the standing count, I'll start reading announcements, but first I'll wait for the town clerk and her tellers to be ready. Yes. Yeah. Okay, tellers ready? All those in favor of stopping debate, please stand, hold your green cards where the counters can see you. So stand and hold your cards, remain standing, do not move around. Those of you waiting to vote no, please remain seated and do not move around. So congratulations to the Blanchard Band. On April 5th, the Blanchard Band continued its long tradition of excellence by once more winning a gold medal at the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association Concert Festival. This is their 15th consecutive gold and 16th overall. On May 10th, the Blanchard Brass Wind Ensemble earned a gold medal at the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association Solo and Ensemble Festival. This is the 26th gold medal for the Blanchard Chamber Music Ensembles. Congratulations to the Blanchard Band. One of the few times I'll allow clapping at town meeting. Thank you. Boxborough Pfeiffer's Day. Point of order, yes? Point of order, come to the microphone if you have one. And be sure you're either counted yes or no.
Point of order, even though I approve the school's achievement, it's inappropriate to have discussion regarding a non-voting issue during a vote.
That's your opinion.
William F. Donovan, 99 Stowe.
It's an announcement. This is an announcement.
Yeah, we're all ready to vote in.
I've heard you, and I'm making announcements to help pass the time. This has been our tradition. Boxborough's Pfeiffer's Day is June 21st. The 2025 Pfeiffer's Day will take place on Saturday, June 21st, at Flower Meadows on Stowe Road in Boxborough. Pfeiffer's Day is jointly sponsored by the Boxborough District Minutemen Company and the Town of Boxborough's Public Celebrations and Ceremonies Committee. The day commences at 9:30 a.m. with the Pfeiffer's Four Mile Road Race. This is followed by a parade from the Blanchard School to Flower Meadows, starting at 11 a.m., and then the presentation of the Golden Fife and Parade Marshall Awards. The fair will then commence with food and barbecue, including a vegetarian option, children's games and activities. Keep going. Volleyball tournament, booths representing town organizations, and a craft fair. There will be live music throughout the afternoon. For more information or to sign up for a nonprofit booth, craft booth, road race, or volleyball, please go to www.pfeiffersday.org. If you'd like to get involved with, by helping with the planning of Pfeiffer's Day or helping on the day, please contact the Boxborough Minutemen Company website at www-boxboroughminutemen.org. The Public Celebrations Committee is organizing the Pfeiffer's Day Parade. The PCC would like to invite Boxborough's local businesses and town committees to participate in this year's parade. Scheduled for June 21st, the parade will welcome participants who wish to walk, ride, or create a decorated vehicle or float that represents their organization or business. This is a fun and festive way to celebrate Boxborough's community spirit and showcase the many groups that make the town special. This is a fun and festive way to celebrate Boxborough's community spirit and showcase the many groups that make the town special. Okay, thank you. Yeses, please sit down. All right, same thing, but with the no votes. Those who wish to continue debate, please stand and be counted. Please stay still in your spot. If you've already voted yes, please stay still in your spot. Back to the parade. Scheduled for June 21st, the parade will welcome participants who wish to walk, ride, or create a decorated vehicle. This is a phone. Okay, we got that. So participation in the parade is open to small businesses, town boards and committees, civic groups, and community organizations. The goal is to bring the town together and highlight local involvement in a vibrant, visible way. Details about the parade route, lineup times, and sign up will be shared soon. Those interested in joining the parade can contact PCCC Chair Jeanette Coleman or visit Town Hall for more information. Speaking of the PCCC, they're looking for nominees for Parade Marshall and Golden Fife. Forms are available at the back of the hall. I think they're out in the hallway, actually, for the duration of town meeting. They're also at the library, Town Hall, or online at the town website. Deadline for nominations is June 5th, so you better hurry. Have you heard about Boxborough News? Boxborough News is committed to independent reporting of town news and information. You can read Boxborough News online at boxboroughnews.org. To receive a free weekly newsletter with all of the headlines and links to stories and notices, visit boxboroughnews.org/subscribe. All right, no votes. Please sit down. Thanks for your patience. The motion to move the question passes 290 to 131. That's 69%. That's the two-thirds threshold has been met. So we're going to now vote on Article One. Article One requires a two-thirds. So this is the motion on Article One to change the zoning bylaw. All those in favor of Article One as moved, raise your green cards. Article One, can we get it back on the screen? This is the motion to change the zoning bylaw, as shown on the screen. So these are the all-in favors. Lower your green cards. All opposed? We're going to count it again. It's two-thirds. Too important. All right, I'm going to ask now that we do this standing count again. Please remain standing, remain still, hold your card where the tellers can see you. If you want your vote counted, be still, be standing, be holding your card where they can see it. Everyone understand? All right, tellers ready? All right, all those in favor of Article One, please stand. Have your cards visible. Stand still so you can be counted. The no votes, you can sit still in your spots and wait your turn. Thank you. I will continue with the tradition of announcements. Steel Farm will be open on May 18th. Every May, Freedom's Way, a consortium of 45 cities and towns that were involved in the events of April 1775, sponsors a hidden treasures event to highlight notable items and places in each municipality. This year, Boxborough's hidden treasure is the Steel Farm House and its buildings. Steel Farm is a 36-acre historic New England farm located at 484 Middle Road. This open and expansive landscape provides commanding views, historic structures, recreational opportunities, and wildlife habitat for many species. There are three buildings on the property, the 1784 Levi Weatherby Farmhouse, the circa 1904 Richardson Ice House, and the early 1940s Steel Barn. There will be an open house on Sunday, May 18th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., where volunteers from the Steel Farm Committee and the Boxborough Historical Society will be on hand for questions about Steel Farm. The barn and ice house will be open for self-tours, and visitors will be able to see inside the farmhouse, but won't be able to go inside. No registration is needed. Okay, the Boxborough Museum at 575 Middle Road will be open from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. on Sunday, May 18th. Come see Boxborough's historic treasures, including the 1850 scale, which is sensitive enough to weigh a penny, and strong enough to calibrate a 50-pound weight. The new hearse, built in 1881, and the old hearse, come and see how old it is, will also be there. Admission is free and all are welcome. For more information, or if anyone wishes to arrange a private tour for a small group at a different time, please call John Fallon at 978-264-0069. The Boxborough Minutemen Company wants you. Boxborough Minutemen will hold a company meeting on Sunday, May 18th, at the Boxborough Community Center at 30 Middle Road, starting at 8 p.m. For information, please contact Captain Chad Childers at captain@boxboroughminutemen.org. Yes votes, please have a seat. Thank you for your patience. All right, no votes, please stand. Hold your green cards where the tellers can see you. If you're standing in the hallway, please come inside where the tellers can see you and associate with one section or the other. Move to the left or the right. I see two people in the doorway. Please move to my left. Okay, no voters, please sit down. The motion on Article One fails by a vote of 205 yeses, 223 noes. Fails to achieve even a majority. It doesn't make the two-thirds. Therefore, Article One has failed. Ms. Hilberg, motion on Article Two.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $2,414,313 to design, prepare construction drawings, pre-qualify contractors, bid the construction, and determine the lowest responsible general bid for a new firehouse at 72 Stowe Road, including all related and incidental costs related thereto, and to meet this appropriation, that the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is hereby authorized to borrow said amount pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, and any other enabling authority, and to issue notes and bonds of the town thereafter.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Presentation from the Fire Station Building Committee. I want everyone to be aware of the presence of the Fire Station Building Committee down front. Ms. Brolin, would you please introduce your committee?
Yes. Our committee includes Priya Sundaram on the Select Board, Maria Neyland on the Finance Committee, Mac Reed, who's the Vice Chair of the Committee, Sarah Lovato, who's the Clerk, Alan Ford, who's a member, Larry Grossman, who's a member of the committee, and Mike Johns, our Town Manager, is an ex-afficio member, as well as the Fire Chief, John Kivlin. I'm Mary Brolin. I'm the Chair of the Committee. We also introduce Steve Kirby from Vertex, our owners' project manager or OPM firm, and Jeff Shaw from Context Architecture.
Okay, so just so everyone's aware that Steve Kirby and Jeff Shaw, they're both non-voters, but I will allow them to speak at my discretion to address questions for which they may be best qualified to answer. So with that, Ms. Brolin, discussion, presentation?
Great. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening on this important vote. Under Article Two, we're requesting $2.4 million to design a new firehouse and put the project out to bid. This would involve three phases of design with construction drawings, specifications, and cost estimates. Additionally, our team would pre-qualify general contractors and filed subcontracts, and then bid the construction, all in accordance with Mass General Law. By town meeting next year, we would have the lowest responsible general bid for a new firehouse. The town has been aware for more than 10 years now that we very much need a new fire station. We have significant physical and occupational safety concerns for our town employee firefighters due to inadequate space and facilities for proper decontamination and equipment maintenance, a lack of general security with unsecured electrical, file server, and network equipment, and non-compliance with current National Fire Protection Association regulations and currently recognized safety standards. Here we see daily safety concerns for our town employees. In the apparatus bay, it's difficult for even one firefighter to move between the vehicles during an emergency, and this is without full gear or equipment. Here we see electrical panels and file server and network equipment out in the open with no protection. Our staff who sleep in the facility have no privacy with only a sheet between men's and women's quarters, not to mention the lack of separate locker room spaces for men and women. To address this, the Boxborough Select Board appointed a seven-member committee to select the best site for the new firehouse. We work with Context and Vertex and studied multiple sites in depth over a nine-month period. In the end, based on 23 assessment criteria, the Fire Station Building Committee unanimously selected 72 Stowe Road. This is significant because many of us were rooting for 502 Mass Ave. In fact, we extended our decision by nearly two months to continue our review of 502 Mass Ave, and we created four different site plans trying to make it work. We were all well aware that support for 502 Mass Ave would have been much easier. But in the end, we all agreed that 72 Stowe Road was much better than 502 Mass Ave in meeting the needs of the fire department. Additionally, the conceptual estimated cost was $6 million less than at 502 Mass Ave. So at 72 Stowe Road, we would get much more for much less money. Two-thirds of the increased cost at 502 Mass Ave was due to the need to build new temporary space for the fire department to function during the one-and-a-half-year building process. We felt this cost had no long-term value for the town. Additionally, the $1.2 million purchase cost for 72 Stowe Road would be an investment in the town's affordable housing stock. We also had serious concerns about the encroaching wetlands on the 502 Mass Ave site, which currently causes water to back up into the fire station and could have had future impact on the site. We also believe the 72 Stowe Road site would allow us to build a more sustainable... And then, right here, is the old yellow tea house. This is Sheriff's Meadow, and this would be the public access for people who are visiting the fire station. We will also have plantings up front to reduce visual and sound impacts to the area. We would also maintain the trees behind the facility to mitigate any impact on Boxborough Meadows and other abutters and be more sustainable. If granted the funds tonight through the design phase, we will work with abutters to mitigate both during construction and operational impacts. With our request tonight, in fiscal 2026, there would be no tax impact. In fiscal 27, we would begin to pay interest, so the tax impact on the average house would be $54. And in fiscal 28, we would begin paying principal and interest, so the tax impact on the average house would be $94. If we're granted the design and bidding funds this evening, we anticipate returning to town meeting next year to request the construction funds. The conceptual estimate for that phase is $31.1 million, although at this time next year, we would have the actual bid in hand. The firehouse construction would be funded through a 30-year bond, and depending on the bonding strategy set next year, the estimated tax per average household would range between $684 to $1,174 in fiscal 28, and $935 to $1,152 in fiscal 29. So tonight, the Fire Station Building Committee is asking you to support your Fire Department and your town. We've known that there's a need for a new firehouse for more than 10 years, and actual data confirms that building costs escalate 4% to 5% each year. Delays will only cost us more. The Fire Station Building Committee has done significant work on this and is unanimously recommending this article. Please vote yes for the fire station.
Recommendation from the Select Board.
The existing Boxborough Fire Station built in 1950s has reached its end of life. It has several deficiencies, including lack of safety standards, inadequate space for equipment and crew, inadequate heating and ventilation. These deficiencies cannot all be addressed through repairs and upgrades. There is an urgent need for Boxborough to build a new fire station to replace the current one. The need for a new fire station was recognized by the town more than 10 years ago when the process of site selection for a new fire station began. Since then, the construction cost as well as borrowing cost has increased more than, and more than doubled. Recognizing the urgency for a new fire station, the current Select Board gave the site selection process a new lease of life and appointed the current Fire Station Building Committee in July 2024. Since convening in July, through its diligent efforts, the committee moved the site selection process through the required steps of laying out the requirements, selecting an OPM and its consultants, defining a decision matrix, and setting goals and timelines for the project tasks. After considering the analysis and recommendations by architecture and design consultants, the seven-member committee has unanimously voted to select the 72 Stowe Road location as the most optimal location for the fire station. The Select Board recognizes that any site will have pros and cons associated with it, and the 72 Stowe Road site is no exception. However, the majority of the Select Board is in concurrence with the Fire Station Building Committee that this location is the clear winner considering all aspects, including cost of construction, available space, program operations, future expansion, environmental impact, et cetera. The next phase in the Fire Station Building project is the design phase. The new fire station will be designed such that 65% of the space will be for the apparatus bay, and the remaining 35% would accommodate the other offices. That meets current codes and energy and efficiency and other standards. At its conclusion, the design phase will also yield an accurate estimate of the total square footage and the cost for building the fire station. Considering the fact that construction costs will only increase in the coming years, the Select Board considers it imperative to conclude the site selection process and allocate the required financial resources for a timely launch of the design phase, which is expected to take up to 12 months to complete. A yes vote to approve the $2-plus million is critical to ensure the town residents will be served by an adequately equipped fire station as soon as possible. The Select Board recommends 4 to, 4-0 to 1. Uh-oh. Apologize, it's 4 to 1.
Is there a opposing recommendation?
Yeah, so the minority of the Select Board believes that we do need a fire station, and it is unfortunate that we cannot change the address for this warrant article. If that was the case, I would have voted in favor of it after it was amended. However, since we can't, I also believe that if the Housing Board Trust believes that selling the land of 72 Stowe Road is the best way to raise funds to support low, low-income and affordable housing in Boxborough, we should really be trying to maximize that amount of money that we're raising to support those residents. And I believe that 1.2 million is significantly below what its current market value would be, given that it's 11 acres, and there's nowhere else in Boxborough you can build new homes.
Recommendation from the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends this article. After months of studying multiple locations and many opportunities to receive public comment, the Fire Station Building Committee narrowed its choice down to two sites, 72 Stowe Road and 502 Mass Ave, the existing site. The Fire Station Building Committee spent many hours reviewing a matrix with 14 criteria, including cost, and made a final recommendation of 72 Stowe Road for a new fire station. The choice of 72 Stowe Road provides the town with the best location for current and future programming needs of the fire station, the best building design without compromises, and the lowest cost to the town. The estimate, estimated conceptual cost of the project at 72 Stowe Road is $6 million less than it would be at 502 Mass Ave. In addition, 72 Stowe Road is currently owned by the Affordable Housing Trust. The town would purchase the land from the Housing Trust for $1.2 million, which will allow them to reinvest the funds in the affordable housing programs in Boxborough.
Recommendation from the Capital Committee.
The Capital Committee voted unanimously to support this article for the reasons stated. In addition to the fact that this, this has been in the Long-Term Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, the need continues to become more desperate, and the costs continue to escalate.
Okay, questions and comments from the floor. Microphone to my left, name and address, please.
Mark Barbador, 627 Old Harvard Road. So when there was an opportunity to vote this first, I recommended against it because we might wind up voting on an article for a fire station design in a place where that's not allowed in the town. And that's exactly what we're doing now. So we're literally gonna vote to appropriate $2.6 million to spend designing a fire station where a fire station can't go. So we also heard from Mary Brolin that the costs rise at about 4%. At a $33 million fire station, I'm imagining that's probably $2.5 million annually. So if that's gonna happen, you know, we, the longer we fool around trying to get our top choice instead of our second choice, which was the one that the town pretty much just told you, you should do by saying, "Don't put it in a residential district." So I'm hoping that everyone will vote this down so that we can rapidly move towards an appropriation for 502, because it will wind up saving us money. Because when you try and build something on land that you can't use, that can get very expensive, especially in the long duration of time that you're gonna spend trying to pound a square peg into a round hole and hoping that people will finally agree with you. Thanks.
Microphone to my right, please. Name and address.
Hillary Grevin, 328 Hill Road. I just have a rebuttal to Mark's comments over there. Even though we voted down Article 1, we still need to correct that bylaw. So right now, we cannot build any municipal buildings anywhere in town. So that needs to be changed. And if we vote yes for Stowe Road, then, we can then change the zoning article, which the Planning Board in the minority asked more time to do. So that is going to happen regardless of what we voted on Article 1. Second, I am in support of the fire station at Stowe Road, and for a very common sense reason is that we had a fire building committee who spent a lot of time and effort looking at the best place in town to put a fire station. That took into account financial aspects for the town, which we heard if it's, where it's going to be, same place where it is now, it's gonna cost the town an extra $6 million. It's going to be less desirable. We're not gonna get everything that the fire station needs. And, I, that's it. I'm sorry. But I, again, I am in favor of Stowe Road. However, I would love to have it where it is now. I think it's in a great location, but it just doesn't make sense. If you've listened to the fire building committee, you've watched their videos, you've attended their meetings, you know exactly and understand why Stowe Road was chosen. Thanks.
Microphone to my left, name and address, please.
Yes, Diana Lepary, 394 Littlefield Road. As the, while I was serving on the Select Board, which was just recently, and even as Chair, I served two years on the prior Building Committee. So we discussed at great length, not only building a fire station, but also building a public service utility building. The problem is, it's a very complicated situation. However, I am very familiar with all the documents, all the issues, everything that this committee, this, this current committee is discussing. Been there, done that. Not only that, I actually attended most of the Fire Station Building Committee's meetings, the current committee. I read all their documents, and I even questioned in detail some of their cost estimates. And with all due respect to the volunteers that served on this committee, I understand they gave a lot of their time and a lot of their energy in trying to come to the right conclusion for the town. However, there weren't a lot of penetrating questions asked of our experts. The experts, who by the way, never discovered, even though they did a zoning review, that there was a zoning issue at 72 Stowe Road. That was brought to the attention of the committee by Mark Barbador, and he, he just spoke. And he would never tell you this, but I'm going to tell you this because he has ethics. Mark is a certified building inspector. He is currently a state building inspector, and more than that, he currently teaches the zoning course that all building inspectors must take to get their licenses. So Mark knows a lot about zoning, and he's taught me a lot. So the fact of the matter is, 72 Stowe Road is not the best location for the fire station. There are a lot of problems with the estimates that were done for 502 Mass Ave, things that I questioned and did not get satisfactory answers on. The swing space cost is grossly over-exaggerated, and in my opinion, looking at the cost estimates for 72 Stowe Road, they're grossly underestimated. There are a lot of things left out, a lot of questions I would have asked had I been able to do so. But putting all that aside, the fact of the matter is, we cannot build on Stowe Road right now. It's gonna require two, at least three more votes at town meeting. One to change the zoning, one to remove the Housing Board, what we voted for, for affordable housing, and then a third one to purchase the property. This, to vote this in is fiscally irresponsible at this morning, more, at this moment. Bring it back to town meeting in the fall, let's take a really good look. Thank you.
Speaker to my right, please. Name and address.
My name is Al Murphy, 72 McIntosh Lane. I'd just like to give the Housing Board's, Boxborough Housing Board's opinion on this. We met and unanimously agreed that the Boxborough, we support the sale of the Stowe Road property to the town for the purpose of building a fire station there. Let me read it. "The Boxborough Housing Board purchased the property at 72 Stowe Road in 2010, using proceeds from the settlement of a lawsuit filed by the town against a Chapter 40B housing developer. Taxpayer funds were not used to acquire the property. It is required that settlement funds be applied to the preservation and to the creation of affordable housing in town. The Stowe Road parcel was purchased with the intention of developing affordable housing, although there was no obligation to do so. Also in 2010, the Select Board, Housing Board, and Affordable Housing Trust agreed that if the property were not to be used for affordable housing, they would agree on a fair price to compensate the trust. After consulting with developers and experts over several years, building affordable housing was determined not to be economically viable for the Stowe Road location. Additionally, a maximum-sized Chapter B ownership complex would only modestly increase our number of affordable housing units. In, in the 2014 town meeting, Article 10 was passed, which authorized the Select Board to use the land or proceeds from the land, the sale of land, for the purposes that best serves the town's interest in affordable housing." He is currently a state building inspector, and more than that, he currently teaches the zoning course that all building inspectors must take to get their licenses. So Mark knows a lot about zoning, and he's taught me a lot. So the fact of the matter is, 72 Stowe Road is not the best location for the fire station. There are a lot of problems with the estimates that were done for 502 Mass Ave, things that I questioned and did not get satisfactory answers on. The swing space cost is grossly over-exaggerated, and in my opinion, looking at the cost estimates for 72 Stowe Road, they're grossly underestimated. There are a lot of things left out, a lot of questions I would have asked had I been able to do so. But putting all that aside, the fact of the matter is, we cannot build on Stowe Road right now. It's gonna require two, at least three more votes at town meeting. One to change the zoning, one to remove the Housing Board, what we voted for, for affordable housing, and then a third one to purchase the property. To vote this in is fiscally irresponsible at this moment. Bring it back to town meeting in the fall. Let's take a really good look. Thank you.
Speaker to my right, please. Name and address.
My name is Al Murphy, 72 McIntosh Lane. I'd just like to give the Housing Board's, Boxborough Housing Board's, opinion on this. We met and unanimously agreed that the Boxborough, we support the sale of the Stowe Road property to the town for the purpose of building a fire station there. Let me read it. "The Boxborough Housing Board purchased the property at 72 Stowe Road in 2010 using proceeds from the settlement of a lawsuit filed by the town against the Chapter 40B housing developer. Taxpayer funds were not used to acquire the property. It is required that settlement funds be applied to the preservation and to the creation of affordable housing in town. The Stowe Road parcel was purchased with the intention of developing affordable housing, although there was no obligation to do so. Also in 2010, the Select Board, Housing Board, and Affordable Housing Trust agreed that if the property were not to be used for affordable housing, they would agree on a fair price to compensate the trust. After consulting with developers and experts over several years, building affordable housing was determined not to be economically viable for the Stowe Road location. Additionally, a maximum-sized Chapter B ownership complex would only modestly increase our number of affordable housing units. In the 2014 town meeting, Article 10 was passed, which authorized the Select Board to use the land or proceeds from the land, the sale of the land, for the purposes that best serves the town's interest in affordable housing. The proceeds from the sale of the Stowe Road parcel will allow the Housing Board to preserve existing affordable housing in Boxborough, and the additional funds will also allow the expansion and creation of subsidy programs to make Boxborough's housing more affordable. Voting yes on Article Two will constitute a win for affordable housing in Boxborough. If Article Two is defeated, the sale of the Stowe Road parcel will be pursued." And let me say a word about the $1.2 million. It probably is a good deal for the town. You know, what's wrong with that? The Housing Board had no desire to have the town pay any more than the market value. Perhaps we could get more, perhaps we could get less, but I think it's a good deal. Thank you very much.
All right. Microphone to my left, please. Name and address.
Brad Hampson, 49 Wheeler Drive. Oh. Can you hear me? Oh, that's better. Sorry about that. A fire station at 72 Stowe Road will inevitably disrupt a residential neighborhood and a scenic road. True mitigation is not possible. There will be noise, lights, traffic. The risks to both pedestrians and vehicles approaching and using the intersection between Stowe Road and Mass Ave will rise. Pedestrians and driver safety impacts will occur. Pedestrians along Stowe Road, driver safety on Stowe Road and Mass Ave. The burden of all of this will be unfairly borne by the abutters and neighbors. In addition, the cost of the site preparation at 72 Stowe Road does not, in my opinion, take account of the elevation changes on that site and the need to level a large portion of the site to facilitate access of the apparatus to the site. It's even my understanding that there's ledge there which may require blasting. To my knowledge, that is not in the conceptual budget and could amount to significant money. Further, I believe that Mass DOT will mandate significant improvements at that intersection. Signalization, widening, curb curving, or whatever you call that, that also could add up to substantial funds, maybe in excess of a million dollars, because any kind of road construction in this state is astronomically expensive. For all these reasons, 72 Stowe Road is not a very good site for the fire station, and I think it should be reconsidered. I plan to vote no.
Mr. Moderator, can we address incorrect information in people's comments?
Do you have factual information that's contrary to what was said?
Yes, I believe, I would ask Steve Kirby to come up and speak to, I didn't write it down, speak to whether Mass DOT would require significant changes at Mass Ave, and the idea that we don't have enough funds in the conceptual model for the land work, the leveling.
Yeah, I'll allow it.
Steve.
Steve Kirby with the Vertex Companies. The first question was whether Mass DOT would require improvements to the Stowe Road-Mass Ave intersection. During the conceptual investigation, we had, through context, a traffic engineer study that intersection. Their recommendation was that there would be no requirement from Mass DOT to make any improvements on that intersection. As a matter of fact, they said that if anything, increased traffic flow would come in the future from development on Mass Ave, not necessarily from the fire station. And the second question was whether site work was considered in the conceptual cost estimate. Yes, it was. We did do test pitting on the site. There was no evidence of ledge. Not saying that there may be some, but you only can do so many test pits on a site. We have not encountered that. The site work on, and again, we're at the conceptual stage. The site work design was designed to make sure that the slope of the apparatus and the fire vehicles approach in and out of the project was at the proper slope so that the vehicles would not be coming onto Stowe Road at too sharp an angle. The site costs are included in the conceptual estimates.
Thank you. Microphone to my right, please. Name and address.
Kathy Vors, 555 Liberty Square Road. I'm standing at the yes microphone, and I do hope that we'll have a new fire station before too long, but I'm not necessarily in favor of the article as written. I have questions and a point of information. I was not as diligent attending fire department hearings and viewings and all, but I did ask a question of Mac Reed at the session that I attended, and that was a question about combining police and fire into a town safety center. And Mac had responded to me that that wasn't allowed because of the way the go-ahead was originally voted by the town, and my point of information is, when was that? And did it limit it only to fire station?
Okay, so this would be specific to the mission or direction to the Fire Station Building Committee from the Select Board. I think, Mary, you can answer that?
Well, no, it was last year's warrant article for the funds to design, and it was specifically worded to design a fire station. The Select Board had looked at a public safety building in the past, and there was not support for it. So when they put the article forward last year, it was specifically for a fire station and not a public safety building.
One of the things that, I mean, there are several things about the site that was mentioned for 502 was that, you know, if it were altered, it would cramp the future development of a police station. I think that was your final bullet point, Mary. And I think we're facing the reality that at some point, the police station has to be addressed as well. And I'm not interested in courting a big bill, but I also think it's ridiculous to go ahead and spend all the design money and build one building and then duplicate a lot of, you know, common facilities and infrastructure in making separate structures for each. So I guess what I would encourage is that we reconsider the firehouse as part of a combined center and proceed on that basis. And, Mr. Moderator, second point, would, can we reconsider, we voted tonight about reconsidering articles. Can we reconsider last year's article?
No, it's not in the warrant.
And we've already spent a good chunk of the money, $300,000 out of $500,000. If it's all right with the moderator, I would ask Jeff Shaw to speak to the efficiencies or lack thereof of a public safety building.
Because throwing more good money after bad...
This is strength from the four corners of the article at this point.
Well, you said between the two locations, though, Mr. Moderator. You know, 502 versus...
But you're asking about a combined facility at this point, which is not the topic of the conversation. It's fine to opine that you'd prefer to see that versus a standalone fire station, but...
If that's the case, then I would have to vote against this because I don't want to see us spend $2 million designing what I don't feel is the appropriate thing and throwing more good money after bad.
And Mary, just to confirm, did the Fire Station Building Committee consider a combined facility at all during its deliberations and meetings?
We wanted to because we actually kind of got excited that maybe that could be done more efficiently, but when we looked back at the Article Four from last year, it was specifically for a fire station, so we could not.
And that's my point, Mr. Moderator. It seemed like the tail was wagging the dog. That was last year's vote that foreclosed discussion of a better option.
Okay, well, to revisit that, just so everyone understands process, to revisit that idea, there would need to be a new warrant article moved at the next town meeting to accomplish anything different than what's been already voted on. So a good topic of consideration certainly, but not something we can do here tonight. Microphone to my left, please.
Tom Horsky, 816 Depot Road. I'm going to vote against this article simply because I don't feel that seniors living in this town of Boxborough can afford to pay for this bond, which is in excess of $30 million. And I think that's been left out of the conversation. We have a lot of senior citizens living in this town, and a great many of them have been forced to move out of the town due to the rising taxes. We all saw our taxes rise substantially at the beginning of this new fiscal year, and I just think that while it would be fine to have a state-of-the-art fire station, I don't think that this town can afford it, and I don't think that people like myself on fixed incomes can afford the tax burden. And I think the, whatever revenues are decided would be better spent on the 502 site, renovating the fire station that we already have. That's what I would do if it was my house. And I think that that's the fiscally responsible thing to do. Thank you.
Microphone to my right, please.
Jim Moss, 20th Way. Tom, as far as I know, the cost of rebuilding the fire station as it exists is gonna cost us a lot of money extra. So financially, the Stowe site is the better fiscally responsible choice to make. Now, I just got through helping to vote down Article One, so it's kind of weird for me to be standing up in the yes side saying, "Let's go with the plans for the fire station." And originally, I was dead set against this fire station. I figured the firefighters could sit out in the parking lot, and they could put tents over the trucks. Yeah, well, they're all tough guys. But I think it's really important that, like a Boy Scout, we be prepared and start doing the planning for the building. Regardless of where it needs to go, it's a building, just like a block. You divine the block, you take the block, and you set it in various places, and you change the foundation to fit the box. So I'm in favor of this, but I have one question. Do we have a representative from the fire department here?
Yes, Chief Kivlin is here.
Okay. I would like to know if it's possible that you could restrict sirens and loud noises from the fire trucks that would be using the Stowe site? Because I know that the neighbors are really concerned about the noise, well, maybe even the flashing lights, but I'm not asking for the flashing lights. I'm asking for the sirens to be silenced until they get to Mass Ave. Is that possible?
Chief Kivlin, please answer the question.
That's a very difficult question. We will have policies and procedures for the sirens. We have, if by some stroke of bad luck, we had a traffic jam in front of the exit of the fire station, and it was the only way to get out, is that we needed to turn the siren on so a car would move for us, then we will have to do that. But as far as saying no sirens all the time, again, it's not everything in our career, and not everything in our job is black and white. We have to have some gray area at times.
Okay. I'm saying, how about 90% sirens?
Oh, no, gosh. Look, yes, 90%. Like, if you're pulling out and there is no cars on Stowe Road, do not use this siren. It doesn't make any sense.
Okay.
Yes. I hope that answers your questions.
That makes the vote a little easier.
Well, that's how we operate now.
Because it's like being a good neighbor.
Yes, 100%. That's what we strive to be, is a good neighbor.
Thank you.
Microphone to my left, please. Name and address.
Hi, my name is Mark Sherman, and I live at 91 Wheeler Drive, and I've lived in Boxborough for almost half my life. There's, many of the folks that I've talked to in town are all in favor of having a new fire station. Having seen the inside of the existing one, it's dilapidated, and it's not right to continue on in that type of working condition. I also think that the Fire Station Building Committee has spent countless hours working on this, and that takes a lot of dedication. But unfortunately, as an economist, I look at costs and benefits, and one of the things that I focused in on was the matrix that was prepared with weighted scores. And I don't believe that it accurately captured all of the costs. And I think there was certain biases in there that troubled me. One example was that the impact to abutters. The impact to abutters was scored equally, and I don't, I didn't have a prepared speech, but the language for the existing site said there would be disruption at Blanchard School during construction. And I thought to myself, well, that's equal to the construction impact at 72 Stowe Road during construction, but the impact to the abutters is not so much even sirens, it's the noise of the fire engines, huge diesel machines that make a lot of noise. They got a backup, there's backup signals that you can't shut off, there's lights that shine all night long, and so that to me kind of said, wow, that doesn't seem the same. The other impact was, as you drive down Stowe Road, there's about a 10-foot elevation drop. A lot of that land has to be cleared out, and I don't know, I know they did a lot of blasting at the enclave, so I think that there would be blasting involved in shipping of rocks. I also think that Stowe Road is very scenic. We're gonna destroy Stonewall, and I think that I really wish that we could have had affordable housing in that development because we need to attract younger people into town. They never accounted the future attacks from the 72 Stowe Road site. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments. Microphone to my right, please. Name and address.
Hi, everybody. Nick Ladzak, 120 Stowe Road. I've heard an awful lot about abutters and abutter impacts, neighbors and everything else like that, but if you want to pull up the map, I'm right next to the fire station with the proposed building. You'd probably think that I'd be on the other side, but obviously, the punchline is, I'm over here. I have a lot of thoughts. I've largely stayed away from the discussions, knowing that it's been going on for many, many years, but ultimately, I probably know that properly better than anyone. I've been maintaining it for, I don't know, six years or so since the town stopped. I don't have the concerns that people are referencing around light pollution. I think the fire station and the firefighters would be great neighbors, and in fact, I think it actually protects me much more so than it hurts me. Now, there's certainly some financial impact that I, probably more than anybody would realize, if I need to sell my house during construction of whatever, two years or something like that, I would actually realize a significant material impact to myself. But I think for the good of the town, kind of looking forward, you talk about future taxpayers. I plan on being here forever, so I think it's the right thing to do for the town overall. Probably not making any friends or anything tonight. You know, I know there's a lot of neighbors here and stuff like that, and I've probably signed petitions also in the past that said I'd probably be against it. However, I spent a lot of time thinking about it recently. I would welcome the fire station as good neighbors. I don't have concerns about the sirens, being in Boxborough almost 12 years now. I can't think of a time that there's been... been a siren coming across my road in front of my house. Certainly, across from Sheriff's Meadow and everything like that, the fire station and paramedics are there quite often. Never a siren. So, to me, that's an immaterial concern overall. Most of the traffic will be directed out towards Mass Ave, which will be away from the direct neighbors. So, again, not really a concern. And with the proposal that I've seen there, and again, knowing the property very well, that actually creates enough distance that I'm not worried about a diesel engine, which I drive a diesel truck myself also. So, really not that much of a concern. It would be a couple hundred, 300 feet away overall. I think most of the concerns are overstated, honestly. Like I said, I'd welcome the fire station next to me. Thank you.
Microphone to my left, please. Name an address.
My name is Nadine Reader, 101 Wheeler Road. One of the things I'm concerned about is the fire trucks coming out to go onto Mass Ave. Stowe Road is a small country road, and those big trucks getting out there, earlier it was said that there was not going to be anything done to the end of Stowe Road to get those trucks out. No reformation or anything done. How are those trucks going to make that turn to get out to Mass Ave? And how is the traffic going to be stopped if you have a truck coming out? You need to build something or have something there to slow the traffic down if you have a fire truck coming out. Something has to be built there to let people know. I haven't seen any fire stations on small country roads. They're always on the main road. So, I think putting it on a small country road is not exactly, you know, prime place to put it. The other thing is that we spent a lot of time when we first came in here talking about Article One, and we spent a long time voting on it and deciding what to do, and we defeated it. And then, somebody came up and said, you know, well, don't worry about that, because we have to change it anyway. So, does that mean if we pass what we want on Article Two, you just go ahead and change it back to putting governmental in there and do anything you want with it? Or after, before we even, you know, have any say as to what goes into Stowe Road or Mass Ave? What happens to that, to that, you know, defeat of Article One? Where does that go?
Is that a rhetorical question or a real question?
It's a real question.
Well, okay, so.
I mean, it was said, you know, somebody said, we have to change that bylaw.
Yeah, the bylaw will be changed somehow, I presume. And there'll be a new select board, new select board, new planning board.
And will it be changed if, you know, if Article Two passes?
I cannot speak for the future, and nor can anybody else here. But zoning, I think it's correct to say, and someone give me a point of order if you don't think so, that the zoning would need to change if this article passes. I think that's true. Is there any disagreement on that? So, I think that's the answer to your question. The zoning would need to change, and the planning board would need to consider it, just like they considered the amendment that was part of Article One here tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Point of order?
Yes.
Would that put it off, but not be true that that motion would come back to town being known because it is planning. So, the town...
How it comes back, could they, by any means or method, the planning board could have an article, the select board could have an article again?
But it would still be a two-thirds vote.
A change to the zoning bylaw is a two-thirds vote, yes. So, good point of clarification. Microphone to my right, please. Name an address.
Erin Harrington, Kendall Road. So, I would like to say, first of all, you voted down Article One. I view that as you saying, we need to go back and have a narrower revision to the zoning laws. Not that the zoning laws can never be changed. You didn't want broad sweeping changes. Narrow change is still possible. It will introduce risk if we go ahead with this bid funding process while we are in that. But there's also risk and delay. The longer we wait, the longer the current fire station will degrade. The real reason I wanted to talk was 72 Stowe Road is centrally located. It's what, a tenth of a mile, two tenths of a mile off the main road? We're not talking miles down a winding side scenic road. It is extremely close to the main road, which will enable fast response times. I feel strongly about fast response times, because five years ago, at nine days postpartum, I had an eclamptic seizure. That is a type of pregnancy complication that should have killed me. Our town's fire department has exemplary response times. And that is why I am a medical curiosity. So, by having our fire station in agres, you allow for faster response times. That's a good thing. And yes, someone might have heard a siren that night. That night was the worst night of my life. But I am here talking to you because we had a centrally located fire station. Thank you.
Microphone to my left, please. Name an address.
Brendan Connolly, Flag Hill. I think I speak for a lot of us when I say, a lot of us think we need to have a new fire department, or a new fire station in town, because they need new facilities. The old facilities kind of suck from what has been presented to us. But this article here is not about whether we should have the fire station at 72 Stowe Road, whether or not we need a new fire station. It is, should we spend $2.4 million to do studies on whether that's the ideal site? And that is my concern.
All right. The motion is to spend money on the design of a fire station at 72 Stowe Road. So, just be sure everyone understands that.
I misspoke, sorry. So, $2.4 million. We do not have the property as the town. We do not know if the zoning is fixed, because we just looked at Article One. So, right now, we're talking about spending $2.4 million on a project we're not sure can go forward. We're just sort of, it's irresponsible to throw that $2.4 million into the wind for a study on a property we don't have, we don't know if we're going to get, and we don't know if, when we get it, that we can use it. I think it's ridiculous to spend that much money on a property when we don't know what's going to happen. Thank you.
Microphone to my right, please. Name an address.
Sorry, I'm going to pick that up. It's a little low for me. My name is Frank Pallion. I live at 318 Codman Hill Road, Unit E2. I just kind of realized as I was listening to this that I have perhaps a bit of a unique analogy in between Boxborough, the town I currently live in, and the town of Oakland, New Jersey, where I grew up. Both Boxborough and Oakland are, have primary school districts that are their own and share a secondary school district with neighboring towns. Both towns are about, I believe, Boxborough is slightly larger at about 10 and 1/2 square miles. Oakland's 8 and 1/2, a little bit more than that. The biggest difference is that Oakland has about twice the number of people, and did when I was growing up. And then, in particular, for this issue, Oakland has an entirely volunteer fire department. Back, long before I was born, Oakland intentionally expanded their fire department such that they built an entirely second unit that was in the middle of a residential area, specifically because they had concerns about the fact that there was a highway dividing the town, and that the existing fire department was on one side, and all this new residential stuff was on the other side. So, there are, I'm now having trouble articulating myself. Like I said, I feel like there are parallels in that we want to consider those response times that somebody else mentioned. And I actually lived very close to the primary fire department growing up. I was not abutting it. I was about half a mile away. There were homes that were not immediately abutting it, but were the next property over. And from what I'm aware, nobody ever had complaints about the fire department operating. And if anything, I would imagine that a volunteer fire department that doesn't have anybody on staff 24 hours would only see more traffic, would only see more practices and more disruption to the surrounding community. And so, I just, I felt like I had some parallel personal knowledge that might be helpful to share with people who are concerned about the community impact. And from my experience, it seems like it would only be positive adding the 72 Stowe Road location. So, yeah, I think that's everything I had to say. Thank you.
Microphone to my left, please. Name an address.
Cheryl Mahoney, 188 Liberty Square Road. Believe it or not, I'm not going to issue an opinion, but I have several questions. Through the moderator, I would like to ask the fire chief, what is the percentage of call rate for this, for the last year in the vicinity of 72 Stowe Road? And what kind of calls were they?
Chief, can you come to the microphone again, please?
Hi, evening. Thank you for your question. Let me grab my glasses. I can give you the amounts, the types. I didn't get that deep into it to look at, to see exactly what...
I'm talking medical versus fire.
And I'm telling you that I don't have those exact numbers. So, if we're going to go back, let's go back to 2023. And so, that would be, you're asking how many times we would take a left onto Stowe Road and travel down Stowe Road? In 2023, out of 1,500 calls, there were 122 calls to the left down Stowe Road for approximately 8%. Last year, 1,606 calls, there were 166 calls. Down Stowe Road, 10%. As of last week, so I did not check the weekend, but as of last week, 465 calls to date where 49 calls were to the left down Stowe Road. Again, we're at 10%. Now, mind you, I wanted to say that we, when we were doing the numbers, we included boroughs on that, so that slightly elevated. I can't say that we would go, you know, it's like just today, we went, you know, went down Mass Ave to boroughs. So, the numbers may be slightly inflated on how often we go down there, because we just wanted to, you know, we didn't want to assume that we didn't go down that way to access boroughs at times. So, we included all the numbers to all the addresses on boroughs for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, Mr. Moderator, a question to the town planner, and I just want to check with you, excuse me, land use director. And I need to make sure that I'm staying within the four corners. It's actually a question about zoning bylaw. And I believe you provided latitude to previous speakers, so I'm hoping that you will provide that same latitude to myself.
Well, we're talking about funding the design at 72 Stowe Road, but...
And people have been saying that the zoning is a chief concern.
And we don't have zoning currently at 72 Stowe Road. I don't think anyone disputes that. So, your question would be...
My question would be, what is the process, the standard process, for revising a bylaw? What is the timeline for revising that process? So, what are the next steps? And then, the final one, sorry, Alex, is, does the special, because it's been, it was mentioned several times at fire station building committee meetings, that special permits were possible? And I don't mean to misquote the person that was speaking, but they, Mr. Barbidero said that as chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, they would certainly entertain it, but it was never applied for.
This is talking about zoning. This is getting a little too far past those four corners.
But it applies to the viability of being able to move forward with this project. I want to know if the zoning bylaw changes can be worked on in tandem with the efforts being proposed under this article.
I think that's a fair yes/no question. Alec, would you care to comment?
And I do take a little bit of obverse...
I'm being very generous, but I think, the audience is interested. I'm being flexible here on this. And I think people need to understand the process.
So, just to confirm, Mr. Moderator, what part of the question do you want me to answer? How to initiate the zoning process?
It's answering, is there, basically, is there a process that allows us to change the zoning? And I think, I think that's...
No, what is the process?
What is the process? All right. So, it was very similar to what happened to get Article One on the warrant here tonight. So, maybe you can just explain the process for a zoning bylaw change, which is, I believe, what your question is.
Okay.
We're straying very far, but I think people need to understand process here.
Okay. So, under mass general law, any affected party can initiate a zoning change. How they choose to do that can be by citizen's petition, by which the town has no choice. It appears on your warrant. They can petition the select board to put it forward, and the select board can then direct the planning board to hold their public hearing and provide a report. Similarly, the planning board, on their own independent authority, and this is common practice, can choose to bring forward their own zoning articles. Tomorrow night, there are at least five occasions. If the planning board chooses to do so, the chair simply has to direct us to post the agenda item on the agenda, and that can start the process of developing a warrant article.
That's all. Are you going to let him answer?
I think that answered the question.
Timeline?
Timeline would be whatever it has to be. I think we have strayed beyond the four corners far enough to understand that a zoning bylaw can be amended. I think that's the whole point of your question, and that's, I think, enough for Article Two, which is about funding the design of a fire station at 72 Stowe Road. Thank you, Alec. Microphone to my right. Name an address, please.
Coleman Connolly, 152 Flag Hill Road. I just want to clarify for everyone here before anybody decides to move for a vote, because I've heard a lot of people say, oh, what about this thing? What about that thing? Do we need to expand the roads? Do we need to add a traffic light? Do we need to blast some land? Do we need to get rid of some ledge? The point of this article is not to debate whether any of those things can or will be necessary, and whether that's going to cost us any money. The point of this is to approve design. And in the engineering process, design is just figuring out the answers to all of those questions. The reason that we are having this article on the warrant, and that we're even considering this in the first place, this $2.4 million, is so that the Otis Project Manager and the Fire Station Building Committee can actually figure out the answers to these questions. They're going to have a one-year timeframe in which, yes, we could potentially have some zoning changes. We could potentially have some design changes. But everybody's going to come back in one year and readdress all of these concerns. And I think that our primary focus should be on letting the professionals we've hired do that. Thank you.
Microphone to my left. Name an address, please.
Robin Lazaro, 959 Hill Road. We're being asked to spend $2.4 million on a design study for 72 Stowe Road, yet we don't own that land, and we won't be voting on it at this town meeting. Why are we being asked to spend this money now without owning the land at 72 Stowe Road? My guess is that those who are advocating for this address for the new fire station think it will be much easier to get the vote they want next year if we're spending $2.4 million this year on design studies earmarked for that location. I ask you, if you lived across from 72 Stowe Road, like many of your neighbors, and your four-year-old granddaughter was visiting for the weekend, and all of a sudden, there were loud noises at 1:00 AM, and I'm not saying it's from sirens, there are other noises, as a previous speaker said, that wake up your granddaughter, how would you like that? Would you like to live across the street from that? The powers that be have chosen 72 Stowe Road as their preferred site. We're being asked as a community to support it, including those of us who are directly impacted and those of us who aren't. The location of the fire station is dividing this town. Can you in good conscience vote to subject your fellow Boxborough residents to a life of misery, living directly across the street from the one and only fire station in town? You may think to yourself, or have heard, that there won't be any noise from the fire station or fire trucks, no inconvenience, no need for a traffic light. Who are we kidding? Fire trucks and stations make noise, sounds in the building, backup beeps, et cetera, et cetera. I ask again, is this what you want for your neighbors and fellow residents? When your grandkids visit, how would you like to be woken up, having to deal with your frightened grandkids? I say, vote no on Article Two. There are better options. Thank you.
Okay. So, before I go to the next mic, I just want to make a point of fact, because I've heard something said twice, which I think is contrary to fact, that the town owns the land. The Housing Board commented, they own it, you know, as the town, and they are interested in selling it to the town for a fire station. So, that...
That has not happened yet. And that won't happen until next year's town meeting.
Microphone to my right, please. Name an address.
Nathaniel Stuntz, 533 Hill Road. I have two points. One, if we vote yes on this, that gives really clear direction to the planning board for what the zoning should be before we come, when we come back to... what the zoning should be before that we come, when we come back to look at it. Really clear direction. We want a fire station there. The second one is, there's been a lot of discussion about Mass Ave for the fire station. People who've been coming here, remember, we voted down that when we looked at it two or three building committees ago because there was concern that whether we could actually build a building there. We voted down the funds to do a geological survey on that property. So when people are looking at this, they're like, well, put it there, put it there, put it, we looked at it. We don't think we can do that as a town. We can look at it again, and we can say, hey, I wonder if we actually have to drill piers down 300 or 400 feet to support a building? That was the question. So when we're looking at it, this has gone through five or six building committees. This is the place that lots of people have looked at and said, this is the best thing. This is where we think we can get it done. It balances lots of different needs. I don't think there's another option. So remember, we've looked at it for years and years, and this is where we've settled on time and time again. Thank you.
Microphone to my left, please. Name and address.
Johanna Chu, 350 Boroughs Road. So to vote yes on this article means moving the fire station away from its current location. I can give you 506 reasons why we should not do that, and you are in the school where 506 children come to school every day. And this school is probably the safest school in Massachusetts because the police station and the fire station is a skip hop away from our children. Please reconsider the current location on Mass Ave and not move the fire station away from its current location. Thank you.
Microphone to my right, please. Name and address.
Cynthia Pierce, 201 Sergeant Road. And hopefully there's not, no such thing as a dumb question. I'm just trying to clarify in my own mind, if we vote for this and the first article has been voted down, the zoning can be changed either by special permit or on that specific lot and without doing a blanket zoning change for the entire town? Is that correct?
The zoning can be changed if it's brought to town meeting as a proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw, similar to what you saw here tonight on Article One.
Right.
It could be worded in any possible combination of ways to do that.
I guess my question is, can one lot be rezoned for, by special permit? You're shaking your head, yes. I think that answers my question, so.
Jonathan, would you care to come to the podium to try to answer that one?
See, I'm just talking about just that one lot. Can the zoning be changed on that one lot without a blanket?
Again, we're straying from this article a bit, but again, I think this is important.
John Eichman, Town Council. Again, I understand the question is, could the town pass a zoning bylaw change to rezone one lot?
Right.
And the answer to that...
Seventy-two Stowe Road.
Right. And the answer to that is, yes, it's possible if you have a legitimate zoning reason to do it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Microphone to my left, please. Name and address.
Mary Nedworski, 70 Stonehedge Place. I move the question.
Okay, I think we, we know what this is about. It's moving the question, it's been moved and seconded. This is not about voting on the article, this is just voting to stop debate on the article. So if you think we've had enough debate, it takes two-thirds for us to stop debate, which would allow us to go to a vote. Everybody ready? All in favor of just stopping debate? Raise your green cards. Okay, cards down. All opposed to stopping debate, raise your green cards. That passes by a clear two-thirds. We are now voting on Article Two as moved. Do we have the motion on the screen? Point of order, yes, please. No, we voted down reconsideration. We're going to vote once and we'll declare a vote here tonight. Okay, we're back to the main motion, Article Two, funding the design for a fire station at Seventy-two Stowe Road. Takes two-thirds. All in favor, raise your green cards. Cards down, all opposed, raise your green cards. We are, everybody sees how close that is. You know what we're doing now. Standing count, we're going to get it right. Take your positions. I haven't called it yet, but okay, you know what to do. All in favor, stand in place, make your green cards high and visible. Our tellers are complaining, you're moving around, you're not holding your cards. I'm here to help them. Help, help me, help you, help them. Hold those cards where they can, where you can see them. Thank you. No more announcements either. Oh, I think I missed one. Okay, yes, votes. Please sit down, stay in your seat, don't move. All right. All those against, please stand in place, show your cards, hold them high where the counters can, tellers can see them. Please stay in your place. Okay, no votes. You may sit down. The motion on Article Two fails. 204 yes, 133 no. That's 61%. It fails to achieve the two-thirds margin. Do I have a motion?
I move the May 12, 2025 special town meeting be adjourned until 7:00 PM tomorrow evening in the Blanchard Memorial School Gymnasium.
Is there a second? Moved in second that we adjourned until 7 o'clock tomorrow night. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, we're adjourned until tomorrow night. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Thank you for the debate. Thanks for the votes. Well done, everyone.